Citizens of Yucaipa, we're going to call this meeting to order. This is the special city council meeting of September, I'm sorry, September, it's not September, April 17th, 2023. And I'd like to ask Captain Walker, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, if you could please stand and join me in the pledge, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Councilmember Venable.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Duncan.
Here.
Mayor Beaver.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Okay. In order to allow for a more orderly public meeting, and in keeping with state and local law, the public meetings of the city of Yucaipa will be conducted with order and civility. Any person who disrupts, disturbs, or breaks up this meeting will be asked to leave. Under the rules and procedures for city council meetings, disrupting the meeting includes speaking out of turns, stomping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations. This is a public meeting that will be conducted with civility and decorum, not a sporting event in which each side of an issue tries to be louder than the other. Public comment will be limited to three minutes and will be strictly adhered to. The rules prohibit ceding of time. All persons coming before this council will be treated fairly and with respect by the council members and by you, the persons in the gallery. Moreover, this council will be treated fairly and with respect. No heckling, yelling out, or interrupting will be tolerated. This will serve as the warning, and any failure to follow these rules will result in the removal. All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing for the item, item number one on the public hearing, premium land development on behalf of Yucaipa 52 LLC.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, I will do the presentation. Before you is case number 22-150. It's a planned development project that includes both a preliminary development plan, as well as a tentative tract map, TTM 20375, for the proposed Serrano Estates Development Project. As part of the project, it will establish 51 single-family residences on parcels greater than 12,000 square feet and averaging over 20,000 square feet. And of those lots, 41 will be age-restricted to those over 55. There's also several letter lots for water quality basins, a combined 12-acre area for and lot 52, a remainder lot for open space for vineyards, and then 13 acres of permanent open space. And as was mentioned, the applicant is Premium Land Development on behalf of Yucaipa 52 LLC. So as shown on the screen, the property itself is located on a 52-acre vacant site east of Yucaipa Ridge Road at the northern city limits of Yucaipa. Property itself is designated as RL1, or Rural Living, with a 1-acre minimum gross lot size. The property is also within the city's Tussamum Overlay District. Surrounding the site includes low-density residential and a vineyard and winery to the north of the site. The south and east of the site are presently vacant. West of the site is single-family residences on 1-acre lots, and then also adjacent to the property is the United States Forest Service easement for Yucaipa Ridge Road for their firefighting capability along that ridge. Now, the project itself has been subject to quite a bit of history over the years. In particular, there was tentative tract map 14297 that was actually originally approved in the county in 1989. That project itself included 33 single-family lots, as well as 11.9-acre remainder, not a par parcel. And throughout the time periods, this map has been expired and then been renewed several different times, with the most recent action occurring in 2016 where there was a time extension then approved by city council. Now, if the project itself seems a little familiar for city council, it is. There was case number 20-136, which was for our 51 single-family residence, Plan Development Project, but existing lots that would be age-restricted, that was ultimately denied by the city council on September 12th, 2022. Now, as part of the discussion, the majority were in favor, majority of city council were in favor of the project intent to preserve certain areas for beneficial uses, including open space and vineyards. However, a key concern both by the city council and the planning commission as part of their review was more the transition of Yucaipa Ridge Road and basically trying to manage that buffer area between the existing neighborhood and this proposed development, making sure that that transition made a little bit more sense. And so there was a number of suggestions offered by the city council as part of that review for consideration, and then ultimately included as part of this current proposal. So as shown on here, I do have a comparison between what was the previous design of 20-136 and then the current design that's proposed now. Kind of a key element is the increase of the vineyard buffer along Yucaipa Ridge Road, so there's a greater transition or separation between the existing neighborhoods and the proposed development. And so the distance between the residential lots here is much greater than it was originally with the old design. The residential areas have also included some area along here, and then a more reentering component for the roadway. And then the last part is some of these smaller lots are within the interior of the subdivision, and so the only kind of viewpoint for them is within the project itself, not necessarily through the adjoining neighborhood where you have Yucaipa Ridge Road having a new street that connects to the proposed project. Now, as I noted, this project does include a few different components. The first part is a preliminary development plan, which establishes the land use standards or kind of the development code requirements I would apply to this project. There are three different planning areas. Planning Area A is related to the agriculture. Planning Area B is for the single-family lots, and then Planning Area C is for natural open space. And so the uses that would be allowed in those particular areas are identified in the Plan Development Standards. So for example, the Area C does not permit, as proposed, residential lots, so someone couldn't come back through and build houses along there, and same with the vineyards, it would be established for those express purposes. And so Area B would be the only spot where residences are allowed as part of this Plan Development Project. Now, as part of the Plan Development Review, this is a provision that is listed in both the city's general plan and development code as a way to process certain types of projects and provide essentially more of a flexibility in the design to provide more efficient land use rather than using the strict regulations of the underlying land use district. So this is provision that's listed under 83.030205 of the city's development code, and then also listed in the city's housing element as a way to help facilitate development within the city. And this is a policy-type of document, so the city council does have discretion over the respective standards which are shown on the right for the residential areas, but the process of a PD is something that has been in place since city incorporation. Now, as part of the Plan Development Goals, the developer has indicated in their letter of intent and application is the development of single-family development. So as part of the RL1 district, if you apply the density that's allowed in that district, by the number of acres, you get 52 lots as part of the 52 acres and 1-acre lots. And so that allows a not-det seat number of 52 essentially single-family lots. So as part of the project, they do propose staying within that not-det seat number with 51 proposed. And then as part of the Plan Development, they were trying to leverage some of the site limitations and opportunities. And so some of the drainage features along the southeast corner of the site, as well as some fault risk along the northern side, was areas that they wanted to avoid. They also wanted to provide areas for vineyards, so with adjoining vineyard and winery to the north, they wanted to integrate that kind of element and activity between the two different sites. And then the last was also provide connectivity that's consistent with the fire code through the site, and so leveraging the grade slopes that they need to have for that roadway network to provide for the proposed project. Now, I do include and have reference in the staff report, a few different Plan Developments, just to highlight that this is a tool that isn't necessarily unique to this project, but has been done in the city's past. They are part of the city's history of different neighborhoods, and these are some of the more upscale neighborhoods that we typically think of in Yucaipa. So Stanley Ranch being an example, where it's a RL1 general plan lot in the north bench with 20,000 square foot lots, and then some larger within the property. So this is Great Avenue, and then you see Trevoli Way, and then there's another extension over here. And so along the western edge is the hillside, the Crafton Hills, and so they wanted to avoid development in that area, and so it consolidates the residential development closer to where Great Avenue is. Another example is Mountain Gate, which is tract 14429. Actually, as part of the city's or the county's general plan, in the 80s, this property was actually designated as RL10, so that would have been one lot per 10 acres. And this project itself is developed with 20,000 square foot lots, and then pretty much the majority of that land area that was part of that subdivision is owned by either the Crafton Hills Conservancy or the State of California for the Department of Water Resources. And so these are two projects in the north bench that have applied the Plan Development to provide lots that are smaller than what are listed in the city's development code for the RL1 district standards, including the 1-acre 125 by 125 dimension lots. And then the last one is the Reserve at Crafton, which is another RL1 property closer to Sand Canyon Road along the north end of the city and the county. It does feature 10,000 square foot lots, and then this one itself was designed with a number of other additional recreational amenities, including a pool and clubhouse for the residents at that particular subdivision. Now, as part of the project, the preliminary development plan creates the standards, the lot dimension requirements, and the land uses that would be within the project. And then the final development plan is the actual map that gets recorded with it. And so in the city's development code, you can do a Plan Development, and then later show up your final development. You could have multiple final developments. In this case, they're doing one project at the same time, which is the 51 residential lots. It does include additionally the other lot areas as identified by the planning areas, and then it is expected to be recorded as a single-phase map. So once they go through the final map process, it will be all 51 lots recorded at the same time rather than splitting those improvements through a larger period of time. As part of the project, they will be required to do a number of different improvements to facilitate the development. One of the most kind of visible improvements is going to be along the frontage of Yucaipa Ridge Road. Right now, the Yucaipa Ridge Road is a substandard width, it doesn't meet the city's current roadway standards, and so it would be widened along their side, does include as well as a landscaped stream bed, and then also includes the vineyard area along the south or along the eastern edge that will connect to the proposed residences of the subdivision. So this kind of shows existing housing in Yucaipa Ridge Road, and then the separation of here all the way up to the proposed house, the first house or nearest house of the project. As part of the project, it also does include their own interior street network of a 50-foot right-of-way that also includes 7-foot multipurpose trails within the lots. And then there's also a multipurpose trail along the north end of the site that would also provide essentially recreational amenities for residents at large. And so it provides a connectivity through the project site that's currently privately owned and allows public access to connect from Yucaipa Ridge Road outwards based on the city's general plan trail map goals. And then this right here is a rendering that was provided by the applicant that does show the corner of Yucaipa Ridge Road and the proposed subdivision. So this would be the multipurpose trail, the roadway improvements, and then the vineyard and slope land steeping, and then the proposed residences in the background. And then certainly the San Bernardino Mountain National Forest is further in the background as well. As part of the project, as a discretionary review, it is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act process, and so a MND or mitigated edutative declaration was prepared pursuant to CEQA 420-136, and was provided for review between July 15th and August 4th of 2020, and no comments were received. However, as part of that review, no impacts were identified that couldn't be mitigated. And then as part of this particular project, since there were some minor changes that occurred with the project design from 20-136 to this current one, a additional analysis was provided that highlights the project changes and that those conclusions originally arrived at are still applicable to this project and helps maintain that record for the decision-making process that you guys are undertaking tonight. And so as I noted, the analysis does amplify or clarifies and makes modifications to the draft MND to make sure that the record is clear about the project-related impacts. Because there are no new impacts, and it was only provides the necessary modifications, recirculation was not required under the CEQA guidelines. Now, we did receive a number of project comments. I did have a resident reach out to me that wanted to highlight that there are a number of comments that were received, quite a few, and so they are listed in the agenda packet as well as in the minutes that were received at the meeting, but I did want to highlight that we did receive a number of comments in opposition to the project. Kind of the first comment off is the lot sizes and kind of the Plan Development Approach, really highlighting that the RL1 is for 1-acre lots and that anything less than that is incongruent with the city's general plan. Do want to note, though, that the Plan Development Approach is a provision that is listed in the city's general plan. It was actually a requirement for certain projects as well, including those in the north bench in the RL1 district, has been the rule of law since city incorporation and before, and then certainly as a policy-level decision on the standards, city council can make determinations of, are these standards that are proposed tonight appropriate, or should they be modified further to provide that compatibility that we are seeking in that particular project? There's also some concerns about traffic as part of the 20-136 and the existing senior restricted units based on the IT or Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual. It would provide 399 daily trips, or essentially 39 peak-hour trips, basically less than one car a minute. With the change to 41 age-restricted lots, that traffic count has actually reduced the thought process based on the IT manual that seniors drive a little less, they don't have, let's say, high school kids, they're also taking up additional trips, and so is miserably lower. And so really, one other perspective to view the neighborhood is there are more than 51 lots in that general area as well, and so the traffic generated here would not be a doubling of that, would be about a third or so of that existing neighborhood traffic, what's already presently felt. There's also some comments about access. The project itself does provide two points of access to Bryant Street, similar to the existing neighborhoods along there. Additionally, there was a concern about Juniper exit and kind of the roadway conditions that are there, and so there is a condition of approval for a stop sign and signal warrant analysis that would be required by the developer. The city itself cannot just arbitrarily require a stop sign or traffic signal to be installed, there has to be a warrant process done first to justify the need for that, and so if there is a need for that, then the project would be responsible for doing that implementation as well. There was some comments about sewer connections and whether or not the residents along Yucaipa Ridge Road would be required to connect to sewer with this project. The answer is no, the Yucaipa Valley Water District does not require neighbors to a project to connect to sewer, though they are certainly free to do so if they wanted to, but this project itself would be required to provide sewer as well as water infrastructure improvements as needed. As part of the water infrastructure also includes making sure that fire hydrants are installed and provide the pressure and water flow requirements as listed in the California Fire Code, particularly with reference to the fire severity zone that this project is in, it does have heightened requirements, and so this project would be required under the city's ordinance and state law to provide those improvements for the water supply to make sure that they can adequately provide fire protection services for this subdivision. And then another comment was concerned about large animals. A number of the residents have expressed that they do enjoy the keeping of horses, and so whether or not this project would infringe upon those concerns. I do want to note, as a standard condition, we do require for any subdivision to note that the project may be located within existing animal raising, and so residents can't complain about the neighbors having horses if the horses were there before. The project itself, some lots maybe would be large enough for horses, but many of them would not be. However, there's no requirement in the RL1 district that people keep horses on their lot. It's certainly a feature that residents that are interested in that will use as part of their decision-making process on which home they would ultimately choose to buy. As I noted, the fire risk is another common concern, and so the water improvements, as well as the roadway clearance, is something that is required as part of the project to address this. Certainly a number of comments that have related the wine country specific plan efforts in this project, there's similar intents in terms of providing viticulture opportunities or areas for agricultural activity. However, the standards and some of the approach components to the wine country specific plan are tailored to that area, and this is tailored by the applicant for this particular lot. And then certainly some concerns about Yucaipa Ridge Road. I do want to note that the street frontage is to be widened, as I identified before, since it's currently a substandard width, and then it will not approach upon any adjoining lot, so they'd be doing the street improvements strictly on their particular site. And then one thing that was added as a condition of approval is a modification to the right-of-way dedication requirements to tie into Yucaipa Ridge Road and the existing easements that those residents have along Yucaipa Ridge Road in the county of San Bernardino. Now, I do want to note, as part of the project, it's kind of a two-stage element. One is the determination of the standards and approach of the Plan Development, if they are appropriate, so looking at, you know, the lot dimensions with, you know, some of those setback requirements, that those are appropriate. And then with that is adoption of the PDP pursuant to the findings listed in the city's development code. Since there's a subdivision or tentative tract map proposed as well, consistent with that, the actual will also include the concurrent approval of that, and then the adoption of the CEQA documentation. As part of the review process for any Plan Development, it does require city council's final approval following a recommendation from the Plan Commission, and so the Plan Commission did review this particular proposal at their March 15th, 2023 meeting. We did receive, and as listed in the minutes that are provided in draft form for city council, we did receive a number of comments with concerns about the project and particularly support for 1-acre lots. We did also receive several comments that were in favor of the beneficial uses proposed, where there is the component for agriculture or open space that are being dedicated with the project. And one of the deciding factors, the Plan Commission did recognize the changes that were made from 20-136 to this one, the comments that were received by both the Plan Commission in effect at that time and the city council, and so they did ultimately voted four to three to recommend approval. Also, I do want to note, on the project, following that meeting, I did have an opportunity to meet with several concerned residents that were opposed to the project. Do want to note, you know, my role is not to advocate for or against projects, just purely to provide information, but they did indicate that they are still opposed to the project, but did include a few suggestions that they thought would make it slightly more palatable, and one was the removal of the monument signs along Yucaipa Ridge Road, viewing that as a kind of highly-developed kind of neighborhood subdivision element that isn't quite rural, and so that was relayed to the applicant, and they did agree to remove those requirements. And then there was another comment about having one-story buildings, and so the applicant did identify that those properties are along the western edge of the site, kind of the closest to this neighborhood, they would only build one-story lots or homes on those particular lots. And so those were some of the comments I did want to at least highlight that were relayed from residents about this particular project. And then I also do want to note, since that meeting, staff has developed three additional conditions that help tailor and highlight the mechanism for the age restriction and making sure that that's maintained, as well as some provisions for the vineyard maintenance and making sure that that, as a condition of approval, is maintained through the perpetuity of the project as well. And so with that, if the project itself is acceptable, the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the project. Alternatively, if it is not acceptable, city council can make suggestions on the development standards that maybe should be employed to make it acceptable, or ultimately deny the project as well. And that concludes my presentation. This is kind of the rendering that shows the site again from that corner, and then this was the monument sign that was there before, and so that just shows kind of that minor change that was agreed upon and provided as a helpful suggestion for staff, so.
Thank you, Ben. Before we move further to the applicant and representative presentation, I will ask any council members, one at a time, to declare if they've had any expert communication with anybody else, and to identify any conflicts. Mr. Garner.
Yes, I've spoke to Donna Snodgrass and Stacy Chester in regards to this project. I had some questions. I also spoke with Craig Heaps. I had some questions about the project. I talked to Dennis Miller and Hanson Wong and heard their concerns, and that's about it.
Councilman Thorpe.
Yes, I had a quick meeting with the developer, Greg Heaps, over the weekend for about an hour, and then this evening I met with a city attorney for about 10 minutes.
Councilman Venable.
At the beginning of our term, I spoke to Donna about the project, but I haven't really reached out to anybody. I just, I talked to Lyle Vick about it a little bit, and I've been talking to God about it a lot.
Not sure that qualifies as a conflict.
Yeah, it might not be.
Mayor Pro Tem Duncan.
So it's pretty obvious that this came before us back in August, and at that time, Mayor Beaver was in the hospital that night, and we had a different city council at that time, so two of us, John Thorpe and I, voted for it, and then David Avila and Greg Bog voted against it, and then that's, it failed, and then we had a lot of discussion about it, and then it failed because John and David and Greg voted to not approve it. I approved it then, and I've talked to just about everybody in town about the project. I met with Kevin and Robin Miskin at their home about the August project, the one before this. I met with Hanson Wong about the project. I met with Kathy Sellers, oh, actually, I talked to them on the phone about the project. I've discussed it with, just a point of clarification, Craig Heaps is not a developer, he's an entitlement specialist. Tom Fitzroy is the owner of the property, he's the developer. I've spoken to him about the previous project, I haven't discussed this version with him. I've talked to Craig and Travis about this project, Heaps with Premium Land Development, and I've talked to the city attorney about this project, I've talked to the city manager about this project, and I'm not sure if I, I don't think I've talked to anybody else about the project, but I haven't kept a notebook on who I've talked to all the time.
As for me, I've spoke with several members of the Planning Commission, Donna Snodgrass, Richard Beck. I've met with several members of the Concerned Citizens of the North Bench at properties near and on the proposed development site. I don't believe I've ever spoke to Mr. Heaps or anybody from his firm relative to this project. I spoke to the city attorney and the city manager. Relative to any conflicts, I own no property anywhere near here. I have no financial interest in the development of this property and stand to gain or lose nothing if it shouldn't be developed or not. Mr. City Attorney, I believe you have something you'd like to say?
I did, I just wanted to point out, it's, the council knows, and so remember the public know, my family does own, their house is on Juniper, on the west side of Bryant. It's more than 1,500 feet from this location. I don't have an ownership interest in that property, so I don't have a conflict, and I'm not disqualifying myself from participating as the city attorney.
Thank you for that. Is there any councilmen who would like to speak relative to any conflicts of interest for financial gain, anything like that?
I would. I have no financial interest in this property. This property belongs to Tom Fitzroy, I'm not involved in that at all. I don't have any financial interest in Mr. Heaps' business at all. I have no financial interest at all, except that I'm a real estate agent in Yucaipa, and I do buy, I do list and sell properties in Yucaipa, but I have no interest in this property at all, no financial gain to be made on this property at all.
Councilman Garner.
I have no financial gain in this project whatsoever.
Councilman Thorpe.
I have no financial interest in one way or the other.
Councilman Venable.
Neither do I.
Thank you. Moving on to applicant/representative presentation.
I want to say, first, I want to say thank you to staff. This is my fourth time thanking him for this project, but he deserves it again, he has worked very hard on this, and so I'm very much appreciative of all that he's done, and thank you for all of your time here today. So first and foremost, I just want to be very clear that this is not a general plan amendment, that this is a Plan Development. A Plan Development is the application that provides the mechanism to modify development standards, such as lot sizes. There is no increase in density, there is no change of zone proposed with this project. So looking at the general plan, let's talk about build-out for a second. When establishing the general plan, the city looks at its inventory of land and calculates the total building.
and calculates the total build-out capacity or the total number of homes that could be built within the city. The build-out capacity is used for CEQA to determine possible impacts throughout the community, as well as to establish the mitigation addressed in the various elements of the general plan. These are numbers that our schools, our roadway services, our fire services, all these things, they use the build-out capacity to determine the level of service that's needed throughout the community. When looking at the RL, for the rural, rural, sorry, the Rural Living Land Use Designation, it calls out a maximum density of one dwelling unit per gross acre. So for this property, the city anticipates fifty-two homes to be constructed. Fifty-one homes are proposed. This is not a high-density development, and no more units are proposed than what is already anticipated by the general plan. Development Code Section eighty-four point zero-three-two-zero, which is the property development standards for the Rural Living Land Use District. These standards are part of the regulatory framework that acts as a guide for how the city expects a property to be developed. These include things such as lot size, structure, height, setbacks, et cetera. If the RL one land use districts were strictly applied, however, only thirty-three lots could be developed due to topographical constraints, possibly forty if it gets redesigned. But the general plan anticipates fifty-two homes to be built, which suggests that there are methods to get there. So in the general plan, as part of that regulatory framework, city codes and standards are a basic regulatory framework that cannot address every situation. The development standards, such as lot size and setbacks, are general guidelines for how a property in particular, in a particular land use district, would be developed. The city has a vision for how a standard rural property should be developed. However, not every property is the same. Not every property has several drainage channels, a fault zone, and a protected hillside. Not every property is a standard flat rectangular parcel. So recognizing that not every scenario is the same, the city offers tools such as plan developments, specific plans, variances, and density bonuses to offer flexibility to the said codes and standards. The state even has its own set of tools that can be utilized. But we are proposing a plan development because we believe that this is the right approach that is the best-case scenario for everyone. So what is a plan development? The plan development is an application that can be submitted to the city and is intended to provide a more efficient use of the land than would be possible through strict application of land use district regulations and encourages a more creative and imaginative planning process. It is even the goal of the general plan, H dash, H N dash three point three Housing Incentives, to offer plan developments to help facilitate the development of housing. A plan development is not a change to the general plan, but rather a tool offered by the general plan, just like a conditional use permit, just like a tentative tract map. And it's intended for projects faced with physical constraints. The property is zoned as Rural Living One and will remain as Rural Living One. So here's a little bit of a side-by-side. On the left, was that? No, that's right. On the left is the previous design for thirty-three lots. As you can see, a majority of the property is developed and leaves minimal amounts of open space. If this designed, I believe that some of the lots could be increased by a few numbers, maybe possibly up to forty lots. However, forty lots still does not pencil out. After the project was originally denied last year, we went back to the drawing board. In fact, we worked very closely with Mr. Ray Casey to incorporate a lot of the comments that we got back from the city and comments that we received from the city council, particularly providing a buffer between the, between the existing single-family residences to the west and the proposed residences to the east. We also kind of concentrated the smaller lots towards a center portion of the property to provide a project that is more compatible. In fact, this map right here on the right are actually notes slash direction from the, from Mr. Casey for what the lot shot, what the lot sizes should look like for this project. The goal of this design is to make as little impact on the surrounding neighborhood as much as possible. Originally, some of the units would face directly, I'm sorry, would face and directly access off of Ucaipa Ridge Road. Now the residences are insulated by a hundred seventy-foot vineyard, which increases up to two hundred and fifty feet if you're counting from across the curb on Ucaipa Ridge Road. And these streets now are also designed to provide a more continuous flow of traffic. So that way now, no cars are facing into someone's front yard or into someone's windows. And so in designing the project, it was key to us to understand the Rural Living Designation. So the Rural Living Land Use District is described as areas for rural development where single-family residential is the primary use, along with conservation of open space, watershed, and habitat areas. It also includes areas where animal uses, agriculture, and compatible uses may coexist or be permitted, and a maximum density of one dwelling unit per gross acre. The one-acre minimum lot size does not define the Rural Living Land Use District. Some RL districts require two and a half acres, ten acres, twenty acres, and even forty acres. As staff had presented with for the Mountain Gate project, that was an RL ten. So that had, so that had a ten-acre minimum lot size, but they have twenty thousand square foot lot sizes. The RL district as a whole is defined by the total density that can be achieved and the way it blends single-family residential with open space, agriculture, and animal raising. So looking at what's proposed today, by utilizing the plan development to modify the development standards, we are able to condense the residential component. And the Toronto State's project is able to provide a housing, is able to provide housing at a density permitted by the general plan, while also providing more areas for conservation of open space, agriculture, and animal raising than would otherwise be possible. Therefore, the project meets the intent of the Rural Living Land Use District, and it will be compatible and consistent with the general plan's vision for this location. And that concludes our presentation, and we are open for questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions of either the presenter or staff from council?
I do. I've got.
So, hold on a second. I'm pretty sure I made myself clear. We're going to have a civil meeting, okay? I'll preside over the meeting appropriately. Questions need to be asked, we'll ask them. I'm sure they'd like to hear public comment as well. So please hold your comments until it's time for you to speak. Thanks. Sir, do you have questions?
My turn?
Yeah.
Animal raising, explain that to me. What's that all about? You said that area back there in the back. It's animal raising? What's that all about?
So there is a minimum lot size for animal raising. So if you want to have large animals such as horses or cattle or things of that nature, there is a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. And it's kind of like a piece of the pie, you know? So if you have one horse, then that's ten thousand square feet that's left over. So you can, in total, you could have two horses. So every property that has at least a twenty thousand square foot lot size. So basically, the only ones that couldn't are the interior lots. Those are the only ones that wouldn't be able to have horses, you know? But they could still have chickens or small animals and things of that nature.
So these lot sizes, except for the ones on the interior, the very center, are allowed to have a horse?
Correct. Correct. They all are able to have horses for all the lots that are twenty thousand square feet or greater.
Remind yourself.
So you said no change of zoning, that plan development is allowed in the general plan, and so this project would not have any change of the general plan. Is that true or not true?
We are proposing to modify two of the development standards for setbacks and minimum lot size. And the plan development is an application that that's its sole purpose is to be able to, for situations where it takes a more creative design or a creative approach to a project. And so that's why we went down this path.
The land stays as RL one, correct.
So a lot of discussion has gone on in the last four or five months about no high density. The density on this overall project, is the density high or is it just, I mean, what does that mean, no high density?
The density is right in line with what is expected by the general plan.
So density means how many houses you can have on that property?
Correct.
And so we're going to have less than is allowed, and there's not going to be a change in density?
Correct.
So it's a change possibly in lot sizes, but not in density?
Correct.
And I remember when this came before us back in, back in August, that a lot of the comments from the city council, from David Avila and Greg Bogh, and even Mr. Thorpe, was about setbacks. I remember that there's a lot of discussion about setbacks. So you've, what have you done to address that?
So I believe that the setback during that conversation was really more about along Ucaipa Ridge Road. During the, at the previous design, we had lots that were right up to, to Ucaipa Ridge Road. I mean, there was a sidewalk and a trail then the property line. But that was, at the time, it was considered to be too close or too intrusive. So that's why we have this vineyard buffer. So a hundred and seventy feet now setback from, from Ucaipa Ridge Road. And so that was the, our approach to that.
So would it be true to say that all of the comments that came from the previous city council, you have accommodated that through your design?
In my opinion, yes.
In your opinion, okay. That's all.
Can you speak educatedly on the date that this property was purchased by the owner?
And we started working on this project in late two thousand nineteen. So we've been three and a half years at this, and he purchased it maybe six months before that, so maybe two thousand eighteen. So he was, you know, one common theme that I hear is that he was, when he bought it, he knew it. He knew it was one acre. He knew it was zoned RL one. But he also, we also knew that there was other ways to develop the property, through state laws, through plan developments, through specific plans and things of that nature. So, yes, he knew it was RL one. He knew that his maximum probably was fifty-two units, although things have happened since then that could, through state law, that could allow it to be more. But he did know that there was the possibility of doing fifty-two, even though the, the current map was for thirty-three units.
Is the owner a Ucaipa resident?
No, he is not.
I have a quick question.
Shoot.
When we met the other day, you said something about a development agreement. And in that development agreement, there would not be allowed to be ADUs in this project. Is that correct?
What I said is that, that in this agreement, SB nine would not apply. And SB nine would not apply because of the way it was developed. There would not be able, the ability for lot splits and things of that nature. SB nine is really not a big thing up there anyway because, and I've heard it said that it does not apply, does not apply to this areas because of the, for several different reasons, but it does not apply. For them to be able to do an ADU on their property, they could do that. We're not proposing at this, at this level to do anything other than build fifty, fifty-one homes.
The reason for my question is on Ben's presentation, there was a table that on there somewhere, it said that ADUs would be allowed.
Yeah, ADUs would be allowed, but would be not part of the initial development of the property.
It would be up to each individual homeowner after they had purchased the property to then, if they want to initiate and construct an ADU themselves, then they would. I would also say that with the lot sizes and the relatively large footprints that we have to provide for each of these homes, it would be somewhat difficult to be able to provide an ADU just because of just the access requirements. I mean, it would just be a little bit more challenging due to the large street frontages for each of the homes.
Thank you.
Mr. Matlock, in your presentation, you indicated that, I believe, paraphrase, but the likelihood of everybody leaving at the same time was low, and I would concur with your assessment. But what if everybody did leave at the same time? What kind of, what kind of burden would we be placing on our gentlemen in tannin green and the guys who drive the big red trucks?
Yeah, so I think that's an important component. So the property itself, as I noted, will be required to provide street improvements throughout the subdivision that meet city code requirements. And so in that case, it's thirty-six feet curb-to-curb width requirements. All access points through the entire area up to Bryant Street, you know, including parts of Juniper and all that, are also at thirty-six feet curb-to-curb. And so as part of the standard roadway design for this level of service, it's the same width as other more established neighborhoods and higher-density neighborhoods found elsewhere in the community. The traffic volumes, even the ADT or average trip rates that could be held on those roads provide sufficient maneuverability for that, for that area.
I think my point is more, should everybody decide that the Y-PAC is having an awesome concert they want to get to? I don't think anybody will have a problem getting out. But if the entire hillside was collapsing on top of them, it is my experience, based on fifteen years of trying to control people during panic times, that people don't listen. I'm concerned about the ingress and egress when horrible things are happening all around them. And I'm wondering if that has been considered when everybody's leaving at once and trying to escape life and death situations?
So as part of the, you know, certainly the improvements and other components for, for fire protection services, that still does apply. The, the traffic volume, and I can certainly refer to the city engineer, the traffic carrying capacity of a two-lane roadway of thirty-six feet wide is, is pretty substantial in terms of the number of cars that can facilitate. Certainly, if people are doing crazy stuff in any cert, you know, in any neighborhood, that can certainly pose additional challenges. But the roadway design for thirty-six feet, the reason why it's that city standard is for the express purpose of making sure I can adequately communicate and travel vehicles through existing neighborhoods.
And that level of service is determined based off of the build-out capacity that could be constructed on that property?
Why senior housing in the North Bench?
Traffic issues. I mean, you know, a, an average household, single-family residential, is about nine and a half to nine point six trips per day. Senior is more like four and a half. So it's kind of, one thing you want to do is try to keep in a residential area like this without having to go to much bigger and much greater traffic studies. And this all kind of came up at the end, was to, is to limit the amount to seniors. And first, we were sixteen seniors. But, you know, standard fifty-five and over senior is a minimum of eighty percent. We decided at the time that it made more sense to do that rather than go back to the drawing board on some things based on where the owner was in the, in the situation. And we also decided that the age of fifty-five and over is where most of your buyers are going to be for that price point home in that area.
The reason I ask is, early on, before I was elected, while I was campaigning, I made a comment about whether we needed to have a Kaiser medical office in Ucaipa. And it was my point at the time that we did not. And I received a very angry phone call from a senior citizen. I think he must have been a World War II veteran because the way he yelled at me and lectured me on how dare I stop his convenience and make him drive to Redlands for medical care when we could have it right here, stuck with me. I believe it, I'm not speaking out of line to say that a senior citizen would rather be closer to services than in the outskirts of town. I'm new to this development world in the last two years, and I've heard the phrase, "It won't pencil." Can somebody enlighten me on what that means, please?
So reaching back to the first portion of that, the, you know, senior has a different connotation now than it did many, many years ago. I mean, senior now is fifty-five and over. It's not sixty-two and over, or sixty-five and over. And there's probably a good percentage, myself included, that would qualify for that. And certainly, I can get myself to a medical place or the store or things of that nature. So I, I don't think that anybody that's, that's, has problems and is in their, in later years or even over fifty-five is going to buy up in that area when there's a lot of other places, especially. when there's a lot of other places, especially with school fees being the way they are, with the amount of rental, senior rentals that are, that are coming online in the Eukiper area. Um, as far as not penciling goes, and I can clear up something that I said, um, on the same driveway, at Dr. Boone's driveway, uh, many months ago. And I've been attributed with saying that, um, well, the reason why we're doing a smaller project like this on the big lot is because of the, um, is because of finances, because of profits, so to speak. And to clear that up, what was meant by that was, if you take the water and the sewer, and by the way, the sewer has to be run all the way out to Bryant as it is, and you spread it on 51 acres of land as opposed to 26 acres of land, the costs are exorbitant, especially when you have $8 a foot for school fees, $24,000 for your water and your sewer, and then, of course, the city fees. Now, the city fees aren't exorbitant to other cities, but the water, sewer, and the school fees are. So, anywhere where you can, you can make it pencil better, to make it work so that it works for a builder, then it's more than likely to get built. That's the reason why you have a lot of development in the town right now is because the skip program was implemented that allows builders to bond for fees as opposed to paying them upfront. So, their bottom line becomes, you know, a little bit more of a, a tax basis for the, for the buyers, but more money on the bottom line. And that's what pencil's talking about.
Is there a number that's, uh, that, if I'm understanding you correctly, if you sell X amount of units, you'll make a profit? And if you don't, you're in the red. Or it'll cost more to build it than it will to, uh, sell it. Is there a number for that?
Depends on the project. You mean for this specific project?
Yes.
I mean, um, we've, we've discussed it for, uh, 44, 45 units, and it, it barely gets you there, and whether it's gonna get built or not at that point, I don't know. Um, you know, with 51 lots, it certainly is moving towards development.
Okay. Is there any further questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Let's get back to the 55 and older. So, what happens if, say, they want to move or they pass away? Uh, what happens to the house? What can they do with it? Do they have to sell it to a 55 and older? Um, can a grandchild live with them while they're living there?
So, typically, in a, and, uh, Ben may have a better answer than that. In a 55 and over community, you have to sell to another 55 and over. If your, if your property's already been designated for someone 55 and over, then that's what you sell it to. As far as most 55 and older communities, and that would have to be worked out with the city and the CCNRs, but normally, you can have someone live with you like a grandchild for a six-month period or maybe a nine-month period. But at, at, at some point, it has to go back to just being 55 and over.
And that, that would be ruled by the HOAs?
Be ruled by the HOA that would be, that would be monitored by the city, yes.
Okay. Um, on the vineyards, who's gonna take care of those vineyards? And what happens if the person that's taking care of those vineyards, say, passes away? Some freak thing. Who takes care of that after that?
So, currently, the, um, the owner of the property's entered into an agreement with, um, North Cork Winery to, to work on the vineyards, to, um, put the money up to plant the vineyards. I think, uh, Mr. Roldan's doing the planting of the vineyards. President Todd will be managing the vineyards. Um, we had a meeting with, uh, Ben and Fermine recently. One of the things that Ben was referring to is that we will, um, we will post the CFD so that if anything ever happens where the vineyards are not gonna be taken care of, whether Mr. Todd got out of the business, or they retired, or something else happened, that there would be funds available through the homeowners association. The money would be kicked in to be able to take care of the, of the vineyard areas and would be, and the city would manage who then took care of them. So, it would, it would continue on, it wouldn't ever die off.
Yeah, and, and to add to that, in particular, so conditions number 93, 94, and 95, listed on page 57 of the agenda packet or page 13 on the conditions of approval page, um, address those. So, condition number 93 is specifically an HOA and their enforcement, uh, of the age restriction. And then 94 and 95, 94 being a conservation easement being established for the vineyards themselves, that no other type of development would be permitted. And then 95 is where a CFD or essentially a tax incrementing, um, entity would trigger if the vineyards are not being maintained. And so, then that way, the city would then have a, a pool of money to, to rectify that issue.
So, how are you gonna water this, these vineyards? Uh, is it recycled water? And, and what's the water issue up there?
So, I know the residents have a problem with water pressure up in the area, although we've, um, run our fire flow tests off the hydrants and, and the fire flow has been strong. I do know that, um, if you, if you noticed earlier in the presentation, there was a fire sustainability stud, or a water sustainability study that was done. Um, several, uh, of the local water agencies and so forth that showed that a, a complete build-out. Ucap City, Eukiper has water sustainability for 50 years. So, that's, that's not an issue. But that being the case, I believe that Mr. Todd has a plan to, uh, bring recycled water up and, and, uh, and water with recycled water.
It will likely be on a drip system.
Got it.
Mayor? Sorry, I just wanted to address the addition of the conditions of approval that Ben was talking about, specifically the default communities, uh, facilities district. So, what that allows, uh, council member, is if for any reason those individuals who are planning as private entities to run those vineyards, if for any reason they stop doing that, the city can levy a special tax on those residents who live there. And they will pay for the operation of that vineyard so that the general fund is not operating it. That's basically the deal that we, the city has made. You get those houses, you can have, but you have to have this vineyard. We want to make sure that the rest of the city isn't on the hook for maintaining that vineyard going forward in the future. But it's only, it's only those houses in that community.
And obviously, that'll be brought up in their purchase and sales agreement as well as they, when they're buying the property, they'll know that that possibility does exist.
Well, how much would that tax be? I mean, do you have a bearing, a percentage?
Um, having not run a vineyard before myself, I, I'd hesitate to speculate. Um, but presumably, the vineyard would already be up and running at that point. So, we're looking at essentially ongoing maintenance and operation. The city can't charge more than the cost of actually doing that service.
But we don't have a bearing on what that would, what that would cost? Percentage-wise?
Um, as part of-
Taxing-
Yeah, so as part of it, as part of the establishment of the CFD, we do get engineers estimate for the cost and evaluate that. And so, we would be able to use kind of comps from other vineyard areas for their kind of annual, um, operation and maintenance provisions for that and use that as the baseline for the engineer's estimate for the CFD cost.
Do you have questions, Councilman?
You, when did you start the project?
I believe it was late 2019, early 2020, somewhere in there.
And how many changes have you made?
Oh, several. We've, uh, um, we've changed some of the, the size of the lots. If you remember, part of the deal last time when it came back is the lots were a lot smaller. They weren't, uh, they weren't half-acre lots, they were, they were much smaller lots. Um, we had a road that went down the middle. We've, uh, we did a loop system and, and which, as he mentioned, what we worked with, with Mr. Casey on quite extensively, um, to, to put in the, the cul-de-sac. We've went from, um, a, a, a short distance back to the houses to not just 170 feet, but almost 80, 90 yards from the, from the doorstep across the street. I mean, it's almost a football field before you actually see a house from, from across the street. We have, um, put vineyards in the front. We have increased the size of the basins. It's been accommodated. I do want to point out too, I'd like to bring up real quick, I don't know if they're here or not, but this house right here has an issue in that, um, in that the, uh, the right-of-way, which isn't being used now for the fire access road there, um, will kind of get so into their backyard. They have a pool back there and things like, things of that nature. So, we also moved the road over to the right a little bit as you go through the intersection here so that we don't infringe on his area over there. So, that his right-of-way area over there actually gets pushed over onto our property so that he doesn't have an issue with his backyard. And we haven't spoke to him about that, but that was just something we noticed was a problem, and we wanted to fix that as well.
And it came to city council how many times?
This is the, uh, second time.
And the planning commission?
Twice as well.
Who implemented the skip, skip program that you spoke of? Who, who, what program? Is that ours or is that a state program?
Um, skip is a statewide, um, program. And so, in 2019, I think the city council approved joining that, part of that program.
Does it still exist?
The skip program does still exist.
All, all of our developers are using it right now, basically, that, that I do business with. Um, it wasn't our brainchild, it was brought to us by one of our developers we work with. The city was not implemented at this time, and there was no real construction going on in time. So, uh, at that time, um, it's, it's through the state of California, through the Royal Canadian Bank. And it allows the developers to bond for a portion of the city fees and the, usually the sewer fees. They don't like the tax rate for, for a house to go, uh, above about a 1.75 because it starts at a 1.25 in Eukiper. It's part of the reason why everything's being built in Eukiper right now because without that skip program, a lot of those projects do not pencil out. But by being able to add that fee back into their budget instead of money that they're spending, um, they have to sell a house with a little higher tax rate, but they're able to put money back onto the bottom line and make it work. And that's why a lot of these projects are moving forward now.
And you're saying, eh, even with that program, the, one of their slides up there, uh, Mr. Hebs, was how it originally looked. You said, I think you said 33 and possibly even 40 if you're able to get on there. Even with the skip program, that wouldn't pencil, is that correct?
They've included that, and, and a lot of that is because there's just a long way to bring the infrastructure, to bring the sewer, um, to deal with water, the water issues up there, um, electricity, just a lot of things that they need to do up there, so.
So, it would cost a lot of money to keep Eukiper like it is up there? So, is that to keep Eukiper RL1, one lot, one house per acre, the way it currently is allowed to be set up?
Yeah, but also, a lot of that is to, um, uh, to bring improvements into the area as well, not just this, this particular project, but other, um, properties up there as well. I mean, for, I know there's some that don't want to hook up into sewer, but I've, I've heard from others that have said, I don't know about, if, if I want development up there, but I am looking forward to the sewer portion of it to be able to hook up the sewer, so.
Okay. Councilman Thorpe, any other questions of staff or the presenter? Councilman Venable? Councilman Gardner? Mayor Proton Duncan?
No, I have none either.
Okay, at this point, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
At this point, we will move on to, let's see, probably 50 or 60. So, we'll, we'll start it. I'm gonna remind everybody that while I'm, while you guys will all make valid points that is shared by others, we're gonna keep it quick and moving forward with no interruptions by applause. I'm gonna call out your name. When you approach the podium, please state your name and your address so that we know where you're speaking from. And, um, I will call out your name and who's following you. If you're, if you hear your name as the next speaker, please stand in the wings, be ready, and we'll get through this. So, the first speaker, and, oh, apologize in advance if I mess up the pronunciation of your name. That's not intentional. Um, Ms. Wendy DeRozier, followed by Mr. William Jock Messon, please.
Good evening. I didn't intend to talk initially, but since you called me, I thought I'd put my two cents worth in. I, um, have previously worked in architecture, and so I am somewhat familiar with, uh, the project, uh, conditions. Um, I appreciate what the developer has attempted to do. Um, I'm still very concerned about the egress. I don't feel like they adequately addressed that. Um, I don't feel that the street being wide enough is sufficient because you're going to end up with a bottleneck when you reach Bryant Street. Although, they did say that there was two access points to Bryant Street. I didn't see that on the plan, and I don't think that was adequately addressed. And I don't think that the spirit of their development is adhering to the spirit of Eukiper. Um, my husband is from Minnesota, and he grew up on a 300-plus acre farm. I'm from Wyoming, which in and of itself means that it's rural. And we, our initial house was in a dense community in East Highlands Ranch. It was a fine first home, but we spent over two years looking for a unique property that was rural and had that atmosphere. And I don't feel like this development is in keeping with that. So, um, well, I feel like they've made valid points, that they've made valid concessions, and they've attempted to stay within what is required of the city. I don't think that the city should be allowing just overall density for the sake of making some money. If these lots can't be developed in the spirit in which, um, the North Bench was initially planned, then perhaps this isn't the right property for this developer.
Thank you. Mr. William Jock Messon, followed by Ms. DeeDee Chudie.
My name is William Jockenson. I live at 35525 Ivy Avenue. I've been living there way before the city of Eukiper was incorporated. So, I've been here a long time.
Can you speak into the microphone, sir? Thank you.
So, I, when the city incorporated, they designated this area to be one house on a minimum of one acre. They wanted to keep it rural. And, uh, I don't know what's happening, but why are we changing that now? Because everyone up on Ivy and all that area, even including the project and subdivision west of this, are all one-acre lots. So, you know, I don't understand what the problem is. Typically, when a developer comes in, they took a look at a piece of property, they do a, what I call a feasibility study, look at the cost of land, cost of building, profit. And I don't know if, you know, if, if it doesn't pencil out, why'd they even buy this? And the other thing, I was very curious when I got the, this notice of public hearing, where this project was. So, I went to Sessors' parcel map, parcel map 320, went to page 16, and I did find parcels eight and nine, but there wasn't any parcel 28 on this page. So, where's the other 18 acres? Or is this something that they're putting 52 houses on only 34 acres? That's a big concern. And so, where's this other parcel? Where does it exist? Because it's not on the legal descrip, on the Sessors' parcel number that we were given. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. DeeDee Chudie, followed by Mr. Philip Schneider.
DeeDee Chudie, 37225 Oak Glen Road. I'm the president of Eukiper Valley Conservancy. And us, along with the Wildland Conservancy, gave the city the Eldorado property years ago and watched it grow and change. And then, we had the opportunity as the Eukiper Valley Conservancy to help the city purchase the Five Winds Ranch. And we love the rural atmosphere. We don't want to see it changed. They take their numbers and they march and move this and that to say, well, we can still put 51 houses even though it's not on 51 acres. When they purchased the property, they should have known that that's what it was. They've tried to do cluster housing up in Oak Glen, and the people fought back, and they won because it just changes the area. Um, and the developer should know that when he looks at property and there's a fault going through it and everything else. Um, the people who live around the area all purchased their homes, if you've heard them, to have their animals, to have their orchard, to have their gardens. And that's what makes Eukiper special. The saddest thing about all this is the contention that's come from this. And you need to look at your citizens that live here now and what they need and what they want in their lives. Because like they said, they've lived in small houses, they want land, they want to have animals and do these things. Um, we've looked and we've talked, maybe going half-acre is the minimum, but larger would be great. East Valley Water tried to develop some property up off Oak Glen Run and Chakal. And we went to our little old city council meetings over there, the modulators. And we got in there and we told them how we felt, that this just wasn't right for the area. And they listened. So many of our city councils have changed Eukiper. It's beautiful. Look at this, where we're meeting now. Look at the infrastructure that we have. We have a great city. We don't want to change it. But you can't change the feel of Eukiper, the rural area where we can have our animals and our orchards and the people who want to live- And the people who want to live there will take care of the land. And I hope you won't change, even they say it's not changing the general plan, you're setting a precedent for all that other land that's going to be developed up there. And we hope you'll remember that your citizens that live here already, who voted for you, want to keep Ucaipa wonderful. And we, we're a great city, we wave to each other, we're kind, and this contention really needs to stop tonight. That's what I say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Philip Schneider, followed by Mr. Bill Tilb, Tilbury.
Uh, good evening. My name is Philip Schneider. I reside at 10560 Green Brook Place in Ucaipa. In my opinion, if you approve this project, you will be breaking state law. You will be in violation of the California Government Code because this project and the Ucaipa Development Code are not consistent with Ucaipa's general plan. Consistency is an absolute requirement and this project does not have it. Now, I'll try to explain whatever I can in three minutes. In the housing element of the general plan, table 3-6 states that RL zoning districts shall have a minimum lot size of one acre. Also, table 3-3 states there are four RL designations. They are RL-1, RL-2.5, RL-5, and RL-10. The number part of this refers to the minimum acres allowed. So R dash, RL-1 requires a minimum lot size of one acre. Now, again, that's in the general plan I'm talking about. Now, as we all know, along with that in there is a density requirement of one dwelling unit per acre. Now, this is where it gets interesting. It doesn't in the general plan say you get to choose one of these standards and ignore the other. You do both. You have to have both. You have to adhere to the density requirement and the lot size requirement. And I really don't care what they did in Chapman Heights. Maybe they didn't do it correctly. I don't know. Ucaipa's Development Code has a process called Plan Development, which allows modification of development standards, including smaller lots. This is the process that was used on this project. Now, please note that the Development Code, which is another name for zoning ordinance, is only a tool that implements the general plan and it is not part of the general plan. So when we talk about the general plan, anything that's in the Development Code has nothing to do with the general plan. The general plan recognizes the Development Code's Plan Development Process, but nowhere does the general plan say the process and the use.
Mr. Schneider, your time has expired. Thank you.
I would like to continue.
I'm sorry, sir, we're on three-minute public comment as per our Ucaipa municipal code. The next speaker is Mr. Bill Tigbury.
Does anyone want to address that? He basically just said we're violating state law by doing this. Does anybody want to address that?
I thought it was scheduled law.
Ma'am. Please, stop. Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, sure. If the speaker's done and has exited the dais and you want me to address some of the comments, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, Mr. Schneider, thank you for your, your comments, or the, the city attorney. We all speak.
Okay. Well, I have more if anybody's interested. I'll speak with you. I have more information, more copies of this.
Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, sure. So one of the things that the city coun, one of the findings the city council has to make in approving the project is that the project is consistent with the city's general plan. The staff report drafted by Ben goes to great lengths, I feel, to explain how this process is not only consistent with the general plan, it's specifically incorporated into the general plan. So I, I don't think that, I guess I would just say I don't, I don't agree with the speaker's comments that, uh, the proposed, uh, development violates the city's general plan. And Ben may have additional comments on it as well.
Yeah, the only comment I can add is, so the city's development code does identify teachers for the plan development, both the general plan as well as the housing element that was adopted, as well as prior housing elements in years past, have all identified plan developments as a tool to implement the general plan and provide more of a site-specific kind of design criteria for projects. And so it's been, the plan development process has been a part of the city's general plan since the city was incorporated in November of 1989. And so it's always been part of, a tool in the city's general plan. And then in this case, the applicant is utilizing that tool and providing standards that the city council gets to make a determination on as part of this project.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Tigbury, followed by Ms. Holly Grimm. Name and address, sir. And I apologize again.
Bill Tilbury, 11773 Peachtree Circle. I noticed these signs up here that say Ucaipa, and I believe everybody here is here to save Ucaipa. The only difference is we all have a different point of view. Okay? No one wants to see, and I've said this before, housing tracts and warehouses. But we do want to see this community grow. And we do have certain points of view on it and how to do it. I, for one, I live in the flatland, you might say. We have density higher than what you see up there. You know, when it comes to our roadways, I still have to get out to Ucaipa Boulevard, we seem to be doing okay. We probably have twice the density. Uh, I realize that we won't have the danger of brush fires as much, but I'm right along the ridge and we can, we could, when you get the winds up. You know, I understand where people bought these homes and they want to keep them the same. Heck, I do too. But I also realize that there's going to be building and everything else. I look at this plan and I see a future with Ucaipa. Say it again, where we have more of an agricultural future, where we have something to where, we have a place for our kids to go, our grandkids in my case, to go, to where higher-paying jobs, better job conditions, that will all come along with this. And I'm looking at saving Ucaipa in that, uh, that situation, not just for a small neighborhood, but for all of Ucaipa, to where we can all join in on it. And, uh, I agree with that person that states that, I, you know, shouldn't be conflict. And I hope there isn't. I hope we can make agreements and we can make this work. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Holly Grimm, followed by Mr. Tim Brickley. You sure? Yeah, that'll work.
Good evening. My name is Holly Grimm and I live at 35766 Carter Street. I moved to Ucaipa in 1989 when Ucaipa was becoming a city, rather than a rural community within the county of San Bernardino. In forming the city, your predecessors charted out the various sections of the city to create various zoning districts to form the general plan that we use today. Many areas, including the Orange Grove areas that later became Treppen Heights, obviously have smaller lot sizes. Must have been part of their plan. The outer areas of the community were given the RL1 designations. I believe this is a way to maintain the rural feel of the city as growth would be coming to the area and allowing us still to be the jewel of the inland empire. After living in Ucaipa for 30 years, I moved to the North Inch area in 2019. The draw to my new home was the RL1 aspect. I'm also now living in a wildlife corridor. I didn't know that till I got there. There's a sign, that's how I know. It's yellow and it makes me think of a caution sign, helping me to remember that wildlife is important and that they have rights too. Also, because of that designation, we evidently don't have our potholes filled on our street and the street sweeper doesn't come up, Carter, past Fremont. If you allow Serrano State's estates development, what will happen to this wildlife? Where's it going? The Planning Commission narrowly passed the variance to the general plan 4 to 3. I was at that meeting and I heard about the traffic study that was reworked to get the variance passed. I want to suggest that their traffic study has some serious flaws. They feel that by changing to a largely retirement housing, there would be less traffic on the roads. Older people or retirees don't drive, I guess. I want to use my family as an example. I still work. I leave in the morning and I return at night. My husband's been retired for many years. He likes to fill his day. He'll go to the pharmacy, he'll come home. Later, he might be doing a home repair project and he'll go to the hardware store and he'll come home. And then after lunch, he might go to the part store. He might need to have his rotors turned at the hardware store, or at the part store. He leaves them and then they'll call him to come back and he'll go back. Home again, he'll look for something to occupy his time until the rotors are turned and he'll go out to the nursery to buy some plants and he'll come home. And then he'll go back for his rotor. That's at least 10 trips a day. And I can't think that he's unusual in that. Does that happen every day? No, but it's a good thing. Lastly, I want to point out that the people of the North Bench are not asking for any favors. We just want the general, the existing general plan to be followed. If the, it is the developer that is requesting a deviation to the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tim Brickley, followed by Mr. Steve Freeman.
Hello, my name's Tim Brickley. I live at 10257 Cherrycroft Drive. For those of you who don't know, that's east, about one mile up from Bryant Street at the top. I've been a resident for nearly 30 years with the, the city was incorporated. And I'd also like to thank each one of you for your service and taking this time to listen to our comments. And I, I appreciate being able to, to impart what I feel about this proposal before you. So I've been to this body before on multiple occasions for similar, uh, projects that were proposed to change our designation and, and I was against them as I am now with the current proposal. Uh, my wife and I have, uh, have a couple of, uh, small donkeys up there. We have, uh, two goats, a couple of dogs. In the past, we've had several horses and we rode, enjoyed up in our area. We feel there's a, uh, there's a certain covenant that the people of the North Bench have with our city council in maintaining that designation of one acre minimum lot size. And I know we've heard different reasons where it's still consistent because they're not developing the entire area, but I really feel everybody, bottom line, I know when I bought my property up there, I, I didn't give it a second thought. And also, we talk about the one acre lot size, but additionally, a lot of our neighbors have much more than an acre. So it's just not the one acre, it's the whole, it's the whole atmosphere up there. So I, I really feel that, uh, we should stay with what it says in the plan and not use another mechanism that says we put so many houses and it complies because the overall area foot fits that. And I, I think that is not really what the spirit of the designation. The majority of the North Bench residents are against such a change as I am. We've really fought this ba, battle many times before and here we are up again. And I honestly feel that if approved, this would set a precedence where the next developer came in and I think he'd have a legal mechanism to say, well, you approved the one before and you could, you have to approve. And I don't know if that's necessarily true, but it would seem to me that once you approve a, a certain consideration or a change in the designation, the next guy would, uh, have a legal case that he could do the same thing. I'm, I'm really against that. So I would like to keep the acre minimum, as I said. And then, and the recent addition of the News Mirror, it's the, uh, the 14th April, under the, uh, the Ucaipa City Council, they had their stated goals. Our new, uh, city manager, he is quoted, "There is a need to grow in a measured and deliberate way. We can and should seek economic development, which also diligently preserving the things that make Ucaipa unique."
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Steve Freeman, followed by Mr. David Whitlock. Name and address, please.
My name is Steve Freeman. I were, live at 35155 Juniper Avenue. And, uh, I would like to, uh, speak about the, uh, Serrano project from the perspectives of honor, fortitude, and wisdom. You men all have a legal, legal and moral obligation to the existing law, the wishes and the needs of the citizens of the North Bench of Ucaipa and the entire Ucaipa community. There is no honor and knuckling under to a horde of developers and their fellow travelers. Their money and power should not prevent you from doing what is honorable. We, what, what I have seen and heard in the city council meetings and the planning commission meetings from the developers' representatives is certainly not honorable. This is, um, just one of the scams is the 55 and older designation, about for, I think, 41 out of the 52, uh, proposed lots. This is an absolute farce and a deliberate act to deceive the city council and the city's citizens of Ucaipa. They said that the homeowners association will decide who qualifies as a 55-year-old. Well, guess who is in the homeowners associate board? Under state law, until all the properties are sold, the HO board members are, uh, selected by the develop, and appointed by the developer. They write the rules, the developer writes the rules. This makes the developer completely in control until the, all the properties are sold. So the fox is going to be in control of the hen house. In this chamber, they are not under oath. So we have to be careful about their utterances and claims. They can say anything they want to further their master's cause. We all know that the 55 and older properties will probably not sell, so they will be back here asking for changes or their board will just find a way around the 55-year-old designation. Fortitude means the strength of mind that enables a person to encounter danger or bear pain or adversity, or adversity with courage. You must have the fortitude to stand up to the interests, interests from outside of this city regardless of the amount of money they contribute to some city council member's campaign coffers. Wisdom means the knowledge and capacity and to use it wisely. You must have the wisdom to recognize that the le, the level of garbage that's been presented by the developer spokespeople, you must have the wisdom to appreciate the unique place Ucaipa is and do all you can do to prevent its destruction. Once a development is outside of the RL zoning, uh, zoning laws, once one is done, this will allow anybody to come to the North Bench and make the same arguments and create further tracts like the one that's been proposed.
Thank you, sir.
You have the power.
Sir, your time has expired.
Choose wisely, keep Ucaipa different.
I'm confident you can hear me. Thank you. The next speaker, Mr. David Whitlock, followed by, followed by Mr. Russ Caldwell.
Good evening. Thank you for what you guys do. Um, my name's David Whitlock. I live at 10234 Norton Avenue off of Carter Street. A couple of quick things. Um, people are saying a lot of the same things that we did. My wife and I bought a property up off of Norton about 11 years ago. When we went to go build our house and we did a lot split, we had to abide, abide by the city rules, the zoning. You know, we didn't have a choice on whether to make smaller lots, bigger lots, or we could make bigger lots, but we could downsize it. So I don't understand how a corporation, a developer could come in and arbitrarily say, hey, let's make these lots smar, smaller. We didn't have that choice. And, uh, so I think to maintain the zoning as it is, is what we're looking for. Everyone has a right to buy the property, to build on it, but it was set with the city, you know, city plans. So my request is that we maintain these city, city plans as a zoning, one acre lots. The, really the important thing, I believe, is like the other people have said, you're setting a precedence for other developers to come into Ucaipa. If we could make these lots smaller, you know, go from one acre to half acre, what was it going to be from one acre to quarter acres next? So I think it is really important, um, for what you guys are, what we're doing here is to set the precedence of. set the precedence of the future of the development of Ucaipa. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Russ Caldwell, followed by Ms. Alicia Miller.
Good evening, city council. Russ Caldwell, 35492 Ivy Avenue. Thank you for holding this public hearing. First, at a previous meeting, I brought to your attention some street marking issues and I want to thank you for addressing those so quickly, in particular, the California street sections between Avenue D and E. So, thank you. As for item tonight, the planned development, we're not opposed to the land's ultimate development, just opposed to the applicant's plan that was recommended by the planning commission. Two planning commissioners expressed a fear of state involvement if the PD was not recommended. I also heard that two big landlots are in escrow and that the PC wants to control development and open spaces. The applicant, in my opinion, is only using the planned development to modify densities of RL1 and use open spaces. The municipal municipal code referring to the North Bench reads, "The North Bench is an area of large estate-type residential use. This is compatible with the transitional landscape theme for the area. The transitional concept attempts to create a zone between the natural landscape mountains north and east of the city and the more domesticated landscapes of the central core and Dunlap acres. Design elements in the North Bench area should follow flowering deciduous trees and vertical coniferous evergreens, as well as rustic fencing and hardscape, but with a distinct, untamed, naturalistic appearance." The applicant is trying to transfer the dwelling densities of the adjacent lots. Municipal code about density transfers says to be eligible for a density transfer, adjacent private lands must meet the following criteria. Private lands from which the density is being transferred must be free of hazards and other physical constraints that prohibit the construction of residential dwellings. Private lands from which the density is being transferred must be shown on the general plan as developable for residential dwellings. In the general plan 2016, page 2-10, the planned development land use, the last line reads, "The planned development is not intended solely to allow higher densities or intensities absent additional amenities and designs that improve project livability." The planned development section also states, "Provide area for a combination of residential, commercial, industrial, open spaces, and recreational uses and similar compatible uses." It's in my opinion that this is not accomplished with the current project. Municipal section about open spaces, "Land which is accessible and available to all occupants of the development for which the space is intended." It's in my opinion that a multiple-purpose trail along the edge of the open space does not meet this requirement. The housing element, 2021 to 2029, reads, "The North Bench planning area includes the smaller neighborhoods of Stanley Ranch, Rolling Hills, and areas of Oakland, skipping. The area offers predominant rural living with one-acre lots, limited agricultural and equestrian uses. The custom home overlay district covers the North Bench and requires larger homes." My wife and I ask that the city council vote no on this planned development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Alicia Miller, followed by Mr. Nino Mason, I believe.
Good evening. Alicia Miller, 12191 Fremont Street in Ucaipa. I oppose this. I'm worried about it continuing to grow throughout the city and a lot of the pieces of horse property and larger lots will be taken up, used up, built on, and our rural lifestyle will go away. Saying that, lifestyle, rural living, last I checked, living is active. It's an active word of doing something, living the rural life. So, to take half-acre lots, put a large house, this gentleman just said, larger houses over there on the North Bench, you're going to take away the ability to have livestock, to be able to have things that you can normally have on a half an acre or larger, one acre. It's not possible by the time you put your setback from your street, your large house, and 75 feet setback for any animal on a piece of property, you have to stay 75 feet away from a dwelling. That takes away a lot of these half-acre lots when it comes to livestock. As far as the vineyards, are these people in this HOA going to be able to pick from these grapes that their rural living is giving them or at least surrounding their houses? Are they going to be able to pick from them? Are they going to be able to utilize them, harvest them? Because part of rural living with the agriculture is to be able to harvest for yourself. So, I don't see how having smaller lots with vineyards around them constitutes rural living. I don't understand that train of thought at all. I heard that the homeowners are going to be forced through the HOA if the people that are maintaining the vineyards go away, you know, are deceased or whatever, they stop maintaining them, that the homeowners are going to be on the hook. I mean, HOAs are kind of difficult depending on who you, you know, have in an HOA management, I guess, I'm not exactly sure. To be able to have them say, "Oh, yeah, by the way, they stopped maintaining the vineyards and now guess what? You get to pay more money."
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Nino Valmason? Am I saying that right? Nino is the first name? I think it's Valmason. I'm going to put it aside. If you make yourself known, we'll call you back up. In the meantime, Ms. Judy Main, followed by Mr. Dan Rents.
Judy Main, no comment.
It was in the wrong. Dan Rents?
Nino Valma.
Nino? Nino, okay. So, Nino's up. Judy, thank you. I'll put you over here, the opposed but not speaking pile. There's a lot of those, too. All right, Nino, followed by Mr. Dan Rents.
Nino Valma, 334 Court Street. Mine's a little different. You made it very clear that we're to be very quiet, respectful, and not utter any, well, personal comments. So, I've got a solution. Science is golden and very effective. At a previous meeting, I suggested some hand and arm movements to express our approval or disapproval of speaker's statements. The feedback I got said the hand and arm movements were too complicated. I'm sorry. I suggest we do a signal hand-hand movements. Remember, this can be done during a speaker's presentation because it is silent. If you approve of a speaker's statement, raise your hand.
That's sign language.
If you disapprove of a speaker's statement, two hands. Let's have a test.
Nino, with respect, sir, we're here to talk about the planned development of the Serrano Lakes, not the behavior of supporting it. Can you speak to the matter at hand, please?
Okay. I'll go along with that.
Thank you, sir.
But what you said at one of the meetings...
I think they heard you, so they're probably going to raise their hands from now on, so I think you made your point. I think they heard you. I'm sure I'll be seeing hands raised if you make a good point. So, you made a good point. I'd like to hear what you have to say about the development, though.
My property borders the development. May not know this, but Ucaipa Ridge Road has an easement through my property. I have not been, I have mentioned to the developer that my property is not to be used for his development. Ucaipa Ridge Road edge and three to four feet past that edge is my property. So, I'm looking at a property that's being taken away from me and I'm going to fight that as much as I can. I don't want that developer using my easement for any construction purposes or traffic or any other means that he needs or might need, and that's going to be final. So, you want to hear it? I'm going to shut that down if I can possibly do it. Thank you for your time and believe me...
Thank you, sir.
I had one more. Excuse me. I got a couple more minutes.
Well, we already turned it off.
Thank you. I thought that was neat. Disagree using a finger. Notice which finger I'm using.
Mr. Dan Rents, followed by Ms. Jerry Rents.
Supreme Court says it's illegal speech. Mr. Mayor, my wife and I wish to say we're opposing the proposal. We weren't, we should have been in the no comment pile.
Okay. For the record, Mr. Dan Rents, Mrs. Jerry Rents are opting out of speaking, but they are both opposed to the development as presented. Next speaker, Mr. John Reynolds, followed by Ms. Kathleen Reynolds, Mrs. Kathleen Reynolds.
Just me, not John.
Okay. John, I'm going to put your over here as well with the no speak but opposed. Is that accurate? It says opposed on it? Thank you. Ms. Reynolds, the floor is yours, followed by Ms. Beth Ann Kiernan.
Kathleen Reynolds, 34999 Jade Court, 30 years on the North Bench. Good evening. I oppose this project. I have no desire to repeat all the specific invalid reasons why this project is so very wrong for the North Bench. These reasons have been stated many times over. In a recent letter to the editor, Mrs. Wong was correct when she said this project is about one acre lots with houses, and it should be, but unfortunately, it's become about something else. It is about greed. Greed is the only reason this proposed project would move forward. Greed from speculating landowner, one acre lots won't give him the profits he seeks. Greed from developers, vine growers, greed for property tax revenue, and greed for a special interest group. We were recently reminded once again that the landowner developer has invested time and money into his project. I would like to remind everyone that the people of the North Bench have also invested time, money, and so much more. We have invested our lives. Many of us have lived in this area 20, 30 years and more. At a recent planning commission meeting, planning commissioner Snodgrass mentioned a couple of times we should be worried about the Chinese. She said this is a good project for the North Bench, that this project is the lesser of two evils. The lesser of two evils, what does that even mean? Evil is evil. I think we should be worried about the few Ucaipians sitting here tonight who want to radically manipulate the general plan to serve their particular needs. In last Friday's news mirror, the city's goals were listed. One section was subtitled, "Seek economic development while preserving Ucaipa's unique rural feel." It goes on to state, "There is the need to seek the right kind of development that benefits the entire community. There is a need to grow in a measured and deliberate way." Mr. Mann states, quote, "We can and should seek economic development while also diligently preserving the things that make Ucaipa unique," end quote. I say, what a perfect way of describing the North Bench. This proposed development does not benefit the entire community and destroys the continuity of rural living on one acre lots. The North Bench rural life certainly deserves to be preserved as it is a profound example of what makes Ucaipa unique. Tonight, the future of Ucaipa is up to the city council. Will it be the safekeeping of the unique, beautiful rural North Bench or the gateway to greed and the destruction of rural Ucaipa? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Beth Ann Kiernan, followed by Ms. Deborah Davidson.
I apologize. When you said anyone or everyone, I thought that included me. Okay, I came here in support of the city council and our new management, city manager, because I saw the ugly talk...
Ma'am, can you please state your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Lake Breeze Drive, Chapman Heights. They took my trees, very noisy, although I live almost an acre of property. We have cougars, we have coyotes, we have hawks, we have a lot of wildlife, wild golfers too. I came here, though, because I just hated every time I read the newspaper and when I was here last time, the ugliness that came from a lot of the people's mouths was...
Ma'am, with reverence, can we stick to the project at hand, the Serrano Estates project?
Yes, and that's what that's about, you know? And actually, looking at the project, it looks pretty nice, but at the same time, you asked for a dollar figure, I thought, when you asked for, you know, the pencil in and he didn't give you a dollar figure. I like to study body language. I've done it for years and frankly, I get a new team, you know? But I'm for Bobby Duncan. I'm for our city council. I'm for our new city managers. Give them a chance. They deserve that.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Ms. Deborah Davidson, followed by Mr. Tim Casey. Name and address when you get to the podium, please.
Deborah Davidson, 9774 Ucaipa Ridge Road. I oppose this project for many reasons. I want to point out first a couple of things that I noticed. Your examples of prior planned development communities do not have adjacent rural neighborhoods. They were open fields and an open area. So, that's a really different scenario. The housing that they have is far too dense for a high-risk fire area and redesignating the development is primarily senior housing just makes that worse. My father was a science teacher. If you have two 26 bottles and you put everything in one, that's high density. The purpose for prioritizing the development of senior living homes is not to make it easier for the developers to make a lot of money, it's to provide reasonably priced living facilities for seniors on a fixed income that provide access to public transportation, shopping, restaurants, and other facilities. Jamming million-dollar homes into a small area and a remote field meets none of those goals. The plan to have 51 homes exit from two streets that funnel into one street doesn't meet the requirement for secondary access. I've lived through difficult fire evacuations on the North Bench and I can't even imagine what adding 51 high-density homes will do to that picture. The Grapes plan to screen the block wall of the development, which will be built on higher ground, so making the first level one story high and the other ones two stories isn't going to make any difference. It's a hill that goes way up that will only screen during the summer months. The winter months will have barren vines, so it's really not going to be pretty or anything nice. In addition, the pesticide drift will definitely impact the homes on Ucaipa Ridge when those vineyards are directly across the street. Even green pesticides should not be used that close to a residential area. I'm not convinced that the very already poor water pressure issues will be magically resolved because I only hear vague promises about how they're going to deal with that. There is no water pressure there. We have secondary pumps to get water in through to do hot water. I don't know about the developers' EIR, but I have personally seen black bear, bobcat, mountain lion, kangaroo rats, not Stevens, I don't know, but white-tailed kite, Cooper's hawk, red-tailed hawk, mariposa lilies, short-eared owls, barn owls, great-horned owls, gray fox, rattlesnakes, kingsnakes, and countless other species. I would much rather see this last open space on the North Bench preserved for the wildlife than to allow high-density housing to encroach on their living and hunting grounds. However, I would still support developments of custom homes that are on one acre lots that would be in keeping with the existing neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Tim Casey, followed by Ms. Heather Dent.
Tim Casey, 9888 Azurite Street, 29 years. Two horses, a donkey, four dogs. None of the numerous Ucaipa residents, as you can see, many opposing the Serrano Estates plan expressed opposition to development. Rather, the opposition was to the planned development for lots less than one acre, down to approximately a quarter acre. Failure to follow development requirements to properties zoned for rural living and in the custom overlay district and the restriction of 80% of the lots to senior 55-plus citizens. To support the higher density, the development sponsors cited a statement in the table CDL1 in their little PowerPoint earlier of the general plan under rural living regarding maximum housing density. Rural living, one dwelling unit per gross acre or one dwelling unit per gross acre, claiming that the 52 homes are allowed on the project regardless of whether the full parcel is developable. Imagine taking 52 acres. His logic, the logic would be if he had 52 acres, but only one of them was developable, would you approve 52 homes on the one acre? This interpretation is inconsistent with the general plan and city ordinance. The general plan states that most parcels cannot be developed to maximum density due to site characteristics, infrastructure needs, and development standards. It is clear from this statement that the general plan never intended for the maximum potential build-out capacity to be used to justify smaller lots... to be used to justify smaller lots if the entire parcel is not buildable. If that isn't sufficiently clear, a graphic was provided on page 2-11 of the general plan to demonstrate various housing densities on one acre, including the one dwelling unit per acre designation. The graphic is clear, and the intent of the general plan for rural living is one home on one acre. Municipal code 87-0340, what Mr. Heaps brought up earlier. Lot area calculations, one acre or greater, also supports the correct interpretation of the general plan regarding how lot sizes are calculated. RL-1 literally means one dwelling unit per acre. Furthermore, the code, Rural Living District, also clarifies maximum lot size, 1.0 gross acre modify. Maximum housing density, one dwelling unit per acre. It is abundantly clear that the municipal code and the general plan never intended for lots smaller than one acre on properties zoned RL-1. Please deny this project. That is inconsistent with the general plan and municipal code.
Mr. Casey, thank you for your comments. Mrs. I'm sorry, Ms. Heather Dent, followed by Ms. Karen Pierce.
Good evening, Council. My name is Heather Dent, and I live at 10010 Country Lane. I have lived on the North Bench since 1988. My parents dreamed of a life where we could have a property and I could finally have a horse. They built their custom home on the North Bench on Azurite Street, on their one acre property. When I got married and I started my family, I wanted the same. We bought our house with one and a quarter acres 10 years ago on Country Lane. My family enjoys our horses, chickens, vegetable garden, and horse-riding amenities. I've worked in this town for 26 years, and I love this town. The Serrano Estates development is a disaster. For starters, there are 41 lots of senior housing in the highest wildfire zone. There is no busing available, no closed grocery stores, no gas stations, nothing easily accessible for seniors. The developer says that this project complies with the general plan because it's 51 houses on 52 acres. 27 of those acres are not even buildable due to seismic activity and flood zones. That acreage should not be included in the total buildable acreage. And we want to put senior housing there? The project does not comply to the general plan. The North Bench is zoned RL-1. The North Bench commands higher real estate prices because of the property, not the houses. The property is more valuable to the city in the long run than a quick flip for a developer today. A high-density housing tract would push everyone out that has horses and chickens because they won't like smells, sounds, and dust coming from those RL-1 properties. And then there goes our beautiful North Bench rural living benefits. We'll be pushed out just like the chicken ranches. Why would you mix half of them with animals and half lots with no animals? It makes no sense. If we really wanted open space preserved, plant, if we really wanted open space, plant grapevines on the whole entire property. I know growth is inevitable, but we need to grow the right way. We don't want to be the next Sunny Mead. I have heard you guys say multiple times that you hear us. Let me ask you this. Do you have a room of people behind me mostly wanting you to please keep our North Bench the way it is? Why would you change it? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Karen Pierce, followed by Mr. Ray Snodgrass.
Hi, I'm Karen Pierce. I live at 35718 Carter Street. It's at the corner of Carter and Fremont. I've lived there for almost eight years. I've sold seven houses in that one development, over 20 homes in the North Bench area on both sides of Bryant. When I sold those properties, I held my hand up and I said, "These are one acre properties, those are half acre properties, you're going to be fine." So all of the people that I've sold property to are going to come back and say, "Well, you told me that it was one acre properties." And here, the City Council is coming in, and you're going to change everything that these people have all purchased thinking, "I'm, I'm at one acre, I'm going to be okay," or half acre. I'm not against the development, as others have said, but you need to do it the same way that it's in the general plan. One acre property per home. And if it doesn't work, I have a friend that has 25 acres. He had it all set out for 25 one-acre lots to build his homes. He hasn't developed it yet, but it's over in the North Bench area. So where these homes are, as everyone states, if you have one acre and you can only get 10 homes in that 52 parcels or 52 acres, then look at what you're doing. I, I lived through the fire, the, the El Dorado Fire. I was evacuated. It was the scariest thing that's ever happened to me in my life, watching that fire coming down the canyon. So now you're going to put these senior citizens or 52 homes right up against the fire zone. You're not thinking about what's coming. Look at the floods that we just had. Once the fires come, then the floods follow. So how are all these people supposed to make their move and get out of there when you've got, you know, 500 people up there trying to get out at the same time? And when you've got these homes that you're building with all these people in it, you're going to put more traffic on Bryant that goes out to Highway 38? It's already a nightmare to get out on Highway 38. And all of these people that you're saying, 41 homes, seniors, we're all very, I'm 68 years old. I'm a very active person. I, I don't understand how they think that if they say, "Well, you know, they're not going to be out there moving around as much like the gentleman said." I'm all over the place. I work up in Oak Glen, I work down in Ucaipa, I work down in Redlands, I'm all over. So I don't understand how you can say, or they can say, "If you're 68 years old, you're, you're going to stay home." I don't stay home. I'm, I'm always running. I put 30,000 miles a year on my car at least. So what, what, what is it that, that, that you think, or these people think? They are pulling the wool over your eyes. They're trying to pull the wool over our eyes. When I moved to Ucaipa 15 years ago, 17 years ago, and I bought my house on the North Bench, which was eight years ago, I lived on another property on the North Bench for seven years. So in 15 years, on these one-acre properties, you're trying to take that away from everybody. And I, I mean, I, yes, I'm passionate, but that's because I've made promises to people.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Ray Snodgrass, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Ray Snodgrass, 10345 Walnut Grove Court, here in Ucaipa. Honorable Mayor and Council members, it's once again a pleasure to address you. I want to point out something rather sobering. Many of the undeveloped properties on the North Bench are owned by limited liability corporations, partnerships, limited partnerships or investment groups. Here are some of the names. Ucaipa 52 LLC, Rich Wine Country LLC, 73 Partners LP, Cherrycroft Heights, number 1 through 50, WMP Investments, Deodora LLC, Ambridge LLC, Coy Builders LLC, Casablanca Partners LLC, Billy Ella LLC. Those I've just listed above encompass about 1,000 acres of the North Bench. If you don't believe me, look it up yourself. It's on the website on WWWSB's County Assessor Map Viewer. All the ownership's there. At some point in the future, these areas will build out. We have the opportunity to guide the future development of these properties by assuring as much as 50% of the land as open space and agriculture. The Serrano Estates proposal includes both and is a great beginning of such an effort. It's not precedent-setting. Each project, each proposal, you as a council and the Planning Commission will consider separately. There have been developments already, and I'm varying off my script because I want to address a couple of items. But there have been developments already in the North Bench, where I'm a resident, and not everybody I speak for is here, and I won't allege to speak for a big group. But I will say that the precedent, if it's considered to be set, was done in the very development on the west side of Bryant Street in the Stanley Ranch area. There's less than half acre lots there. They're nice. It's a good development, and I think it's good for the area. It actually raises the property values of the adjacent properties that are an acre or more. I want to clear up something that was said, that I am chummy with premium land development. My relationship with premium land development was to do the entitlement for construction of an agricultural barn. And that's that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Mrs. Colleen Wong.
Hanson Wong, 35150 Court Street, Ucaipa. You must be tired of hearing that by now, and you wish I was in the other pile, which I wouldn't be speaking at all. But unfortunately, I am forced to speak because of what's going on. First of all, they might feel that there's no precedent-setting. But Mr. Heaps himself, at the last Planning Commission meeting, said, for him, if this goes through, it will be precedent-setting. He will utilize this for his next projects. And he said that publicly. In addition, I am not against the project. I'm against a well-developed project that maintains a certain atmosphere. And, but when I said that before, I was grouped in a group of people that Mr. Heaps says was lying. I am not lying. I am for the project, but I wish it to be an appropriate project. This project was here before in August. And some of the things that were mentioned were not followed through. Maybe the City Council didn't care about it. One was topography. If you look at the houses that are currently there and the ones that they're planning, sure, it looks nice from the picture. So that means I have to stand in that place to have a nice-looking neighborhood. If I go into the neighborhood or look from on top, what they should do is a designated picture, a rendition of what it would look like, what their houses from on top are from a different size away from that thing that hides it. This, by my profession, there's two things I'm concerned about. The physical well-being of people and the mental well-being of people. I'm going to address in the last minute the physical well-being first. Uh, seniors, they require a certain amount of care and concern. You know, if you addressed fire with a standard addressed by what our planning people have done, that works fine. But this does not include the wildfires or possibly other things that could happen, earthquakes and so on, that would need evacuation. I see no evacuation plan. You say, "Oh, you know, don't worry about the fire, it's once in a while," even though it was three times in the last five years that I felt like I had to move my animals and stuff. Well, you look at it, and the places where they put our senior citizens is right in the center with a cul-de-sac. They only have one way out. You're going to have to get a truck in, possibly a fire truck, and then the, the insurance company pays $7,000 just for the fire insurance.
Thank you, doctor. Mrs. Colleen Wong, followed by Mr. Joel Mcgabe. Mcgabe, sorry. McCabe, I apologize.
Colleen Wong, 35150 Court Street. Council members, I have a few questions for you. As I understand from reading the material that was provided to the Planning Commission, instead of an EIR, you chose to have a mitigated negative declaration done. This was authored by our city planner, Ben Matlock. He based his mitigated negative declaration on information he received from Jennings Environmental. Mr. Matlock's report reads, "The field study completed on site did not discover any candidates, sensitive or special status species, riparian habitat, or other sensitive natural community." Consequently, his conclusions were with adherence to mitigation measure Bio-1, the proposed project would have less than significant effects on biological resources. I would very much like to know exactly how and when Jennings Environmental did their assessment. I question their ability and their findings, as well as Mr. Matlock's mitigated negative declaration. I have seen kangaroo rats up there. The San Bernardino kangaroo rat is an endangered species, and they didn't even look for it. I am asking for a full EIR to be done with the K-Rat and protocol. I've also seen the whitetail hawk, as someone else mentioned, and that too was not mentioned. I've seen rosy boas up there. I've collected them, taken them home, showed them to my kids, took them back and left them where I found them. Those weren't mentioned either. Those are very rare. I'd like to talk about transfer of density, because that's in our municipal codes, and it's something that you guys, I've only heard one other person mention. That's how you get to move one house to another house on a piece of property. But according to our code, you have to do that. You can move it over only if it's from a buildable lot. And these, we all know, are not buildable. And they also have to give something to Ucaipa, these, these planned developments. I haven't heard a single thing about what this group is giving to Ucaipa. Now, before I run out of time, I have something for you guys here. I have petitions for you from 1,291 citizens in this city. Multiple people have signed them, and they are, and collected signatures, and therefore low-density housing. And Mr. Garner, you told us you would oppose high-density housing. Since then, I've heard you redefine it as four.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
In one acre, but we're going to hold you to it.
Mr. Joel McCabe.
There's 626 registered voters here. Yeah.
I'm coming, you hear me speaking.
Where do I give this?
You can hand it to staff to your right.
Which person?
Our city clerk is on the far right.
Okay, I also ran out of time, so I want to, um...
Joel Mcgabe.
Give her to put into the official record. Is that okay?
Thank you.
I can do that?
Yes.
Okay, I want it in official records.
Followed by Mr. Jay Bog.
Joel Mcgabe, 35581 Fur Avenue. Mayor Beaver, as you stated last Monday regarding the special meeting and state regulation for housing, how do we punch back against these state laws? You would rather punch than get punched. Did I understand that correctly? Okay. As a District 1 representative who opposes the Serrano Estates, Estates development, I am ready to punch and stand for both residents of the North Bench and the current general plan. I sure hope you all listen to the Planning Commission on March 15th. Multiple speakers, lots of passion and emotions. I was in attendance and did speak opposing this project. My approach was a bit different. In my public comment, I mentioned several developers by name that had funded two campaigns of our sitting council members. I simply read the names on the forms 460 found on the city of Ucaipa's website under the Election and Voter Information Campaign and FPPC filings. These names were all legitimate. I do question the campaign contributions from developers, which I stated seem suspect or suspicious based on local-approved projects and those mentioned as contributors. I named Premium Land Development as a contributor and their multiple projects in Ucaipa because the Serrano Estates is a premium land development project, which puts this company under a microscope as its proposed development is against the general plan, which raises eyebrows and gets people's attention. Like broken glass, if approved, this will forever fracture and change the future of the North Bench as we know it. During the Planning Commission review of the Serrano Estates project on March 15th, Mr. Heaps was allowed to comment for himself after the many public comments before the commission's vote. And the one thing that stood out to me, he stated that Premium Land Development did not donate to any campaigns. In fact, yes, they did. This is public information within the FPPC filings under the city of Ucaipa. Mr. Heaps also stated at the last council meeting, "The North Bench residents just want rural land and not development." That's not true. As most approved of the project, just asking for one acre lots and one dwelling. Heaps stated, "It's business, not personal." For him, it's business. For the residents, it's personal. I'd like you to think of two things in my closing. Donna Snodgrass of the Planning Commission voted in approval of the Serrano Estates project when she should have recused herself because of her association with Premium Land Development, who recently built a barn on her home, and her association with the Ucaipa Wine Alliance. This would have changed the vote to 3-3. Secondly, Bobby Duncan also should recuse himself because of his stated relationship with Craig Heaps, owner of Premium Land Development, and his bitter dislike, disrespect, and verbal abuse for the people of the North Bench. I oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Jay Bog, followed by Mrs., I'm sorry, Ms. followed by Mrs., I'm sorry, Ms. Kathleen Woolsey. All right. So, Mr. Bogue, if you're making your way up, I'll put you off to the side. Ms. Kathleen Woolsey, followed by Mr. Kevin Miskin.
Kathleen Woolsey, one three six two four Scenic Crest Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for the service you provide for our community. The city's packet, and I'm referring to the PDF starting on page 83, compared Serrano Estates to three planned developments: Lower Ucaipa's Reserve at Crafton, Stanley Ranch, and Mountain Gate. First, the general plan goals are not the same in Lower Ucaipa and the North Bench. Second, I understand that Stanley Ranch and Mountain Gate were county projects that were annexed by the city. Additionally, the minimum size lot at Stanley Ranch and Mountain Gate are 20,000 square feet, which is about a half an acre, with an average lot size of slightly over that, at Mountain Gate and one acre at Stanley Ranch. In comparison, the Serrano Estates' proposed minimum lot size is slightly larger than a quarter of an acre. The rural living district ordinance requires minimum-one lot acres, and the custom home overlay ordinance requires lot sizes of at least a half an acre. Further, there are no restrictions on the lots being designated for seniors only, which are 55 and up, in Stanley Ranch or Mountain Gate, whereas 80% of the lots are restricted to seniors in the Serrano Estates, therefore limiting the pool of buyers and potentially driving home prices down. The project sponsor has mischaracterized the opponents as saying that they just don't want development. I am one of the "they" that the project sponsor has referred to. I take exception to this, and in response, may I say this statement is blatantly false. My objection to the planned development is based entirely on the non-compliance with the specific goals of the city's general plan for the North Bench or for the custom home overlay district. This otherwise opens, oh, this likewise opens the door for circumventing the housing density and development requirements throughout the entire city. I would also like to note that the acreage set aside as open space is not compatible with being developed. This is not something I am saying because I do not want development, but rather because whether it is one or 100 homes on the property, due to seismic setbacks, drainage requirements, the hillside overlay ordinance, it is inappropriate to use this land as justification for more homes. As I, as many have already stated, I am, we are, asking the city council to deny the project in favor of something that complies with the general plan and the municipal code. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jay Bogue, did you arrive? Okay. Mr. Kevin Miskin, followed by Mrs. Robin Miskin.
Thank you, councilman. We join with the majority of Ucaipa in opposing this planned development. The Agenda Packet contains an evaluation of various environmental factors that have found less than significant impact as relates to land use planning and many of the other environmental factors in the city's mitigated negative declaration. We believe this evaluation is flawed and incomplete at best. The proposed development will cause a significant individual and cumulative environmental impact due to a conflict with the general plan and municipal code for this native wildlands property in the rural living district and custom home overlay district. The flaws in the evaluation are supported by the city's own admission on page eight and nine of the Agenda Packet that say, quote, "The project would create new development standards which would replace the existing RL1 standards that are applicable to the site. These new development standards are inconsistent with the RL1 development standards and do not comply with the objective standards of the RL1 and custom home overlay," close quote. Regarding future cumulative environmental impact of the Serrano Estates project of Ucaipa as a whole, the project sponsor, Premium Land Development, on its own website states, "The project is the first vineyard estate-style housing in Ucaipa area and will open the door for similar projects in the future." Page 10 of the Agenda Packet notes that the project's compliance with four very general policies in the general plan for the city as a whole, but fails to note the project's non-compliance with specific policies and housing elements set forth in the general plan for the North Bench and the custom home overlay districts. Here are just a few of those. HN 1.7, Neighborhood Identity; HN 2.4, North Bench; HN 3.5, Overlay Districts; HN 3.6, Compatibility; CDL 1.8, Overlay Districts. These all state, and I quote, "require all-new residential development in the North Bench to be consistent with the custom home overlay, adopted density, and development standards, and the rural character of those areas," close quote. Again, quoting, "require that residential development projects are compatible with the character of their neighborhood, comply with the municipal code development standards, and follow appropriate site planning and project design practices," unquote. Quoting again, "recognize, preserve, and enhance the neighborhood character through adherence to design, development, and other standards in the municipal code overlay districts." This project does not comply with the development requirements set forth in Municipal Code 84.0320 for rural living districts, which require, among other things, a lot width of 125 feet, a maximum housing density of one dwelling unit per acre, not one dwelling unit per gross acre, and a minimum lot size of one gross acre.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Mrs. Robin Miskin, followed by Ms. Martha Glubka.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen. Continuing with this evaluation about the Agenda Packet, which contains an evaluation of various environmental factors that found less than significant impact as relates to land use and planning, I wanted to continue on with respect to those items. I didn't say my name, Robin Miskin, three five four seven two Ivy Avenue. This, I wanted to point out that with respect to Municipal Code 84 dot 0320, there was a slide put up here, and I believe it was by the representative for this project. They did not show that second from the bottom, one of the requirements for the land use was maximum housing density of one dwelling unit per acre, not one dwelling unit per gross acre. And I wanted to point that out. This project and a majority, has a majority of lot sizes that will not support characteristic large animal husbandry associated with the rural living district and surrounding land uses. Pursuant to Municipal Code 84 dot 0560, the minimum lot size must be one half acre and provide a 70-foot offset from the structures to large animals. And we need to have that in this area in order to have these animals. The project doesn't even comply with the development requirements of the custom home overlay district, Municipal Code 85 five dot 040501. The planned development does not comply with the general plan goals and objectives stated in CDL dash 2.4 for grading and CDL dash 2.7 for site planning, which provide the following guidance. Quote, "Encourage natural grading techniques that blend with the existing topography," and quote, "ensure projects fit the natural site topography rather than altering the natural topography or features to accommodate a stock pad," unquote. With the proposed two-to-one cut and fill slopes, the project completely ignores the natural contouring, and rather than minimizing disturbance, as it states, it actually maximizes disturbance and proposes stock pads. The steep slopes are difficult to maintain and nearly impossible for seniors to maintain. In summary, the Serrano Estates development will have a significant impact with regard to land use and planning, as relates to rural living, and even more so when considering other environmental factors. There are only 33 developable, bul, developable acres. We would like to recommend 33 homes. There will be as much open space, and these homes will blend into the surrounding homes. We ask that staff recommend the 33 homes on one acre. We'll still be able to hook up with Sear.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
So that's the second time, that's the second time that a speaker has challenged Mr. Matlock's evaluation of this project. Does that warrant any type of response or no?
Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor, would you like me to respond?
Please.
You know, the general plan is a document that attempts to reconcile competing interests, right? It wants to promote housing while also maintaining the rural character of the city. I've often said that, you know, any person can look in the general plan and find a few items to support their point of view. I don't believe that that is a bad thing. I think that's intentional, because it is designed to represent the viewpoint of the entire community. However, when you see language like "encourage," right, it's very different than the development standards, which are mandatory on a project. And that's what you're being asked to modify today with the planned development.
Relative to the environmental studies, I think that's what we're referencing. Are you able to defend the recommendation based on the evaluations made by a third-party contractor and yourself, sir?
So I can provide some details as well. So the bio survey was done. They did do a reconnaissance level survey on June 4th, 2022, as well as literature, research, and surveys as part of that. Some of the species are identified, such as the San Bernardino canyon rerat. The city has done trappings for those for a number of different projects over probably a 30-year or 25-year span. We have never found one through those trapping that sort sizes. And so, as part of both that literature research, the survey, and unless there's substantial evidence that demonstrates otherwise, those surveys have been inconclusive for that. Certainly, though, City Council, as part of your discretion, could certainly dread the applicant to go back and provide updated surveys for that as well. I do want to note, as part of the land use standards and consistency, it really comes down to is the land use standards being done or modified as part of the sequel process under that land use category where it creates kind of environmental impact. And so, as part of the discussion and deference that City Council has for administering general plan policies, it really comes down to is weighing, as the city attorney referenced, the competing interests and providing a balanced approach to those different policies. And so, as noted, the city's general plan does provide the planned development review. And so, is within your discretion to determine whether or not the standards that are proposed are appropriate in leveraging and implementing the overall policies. As part of the general plan, there is also a note that is referenced in the Agenda Report, that you, as a decision-making body or as part of staff as well, reviewing projects, were not evaluating projects for every single general plan policy, but really the ones that apply and further the overall intent and direction of the general plan. As noted by the city attorney as well, you know, some of the standards and the planned development approach, those are things that can be modified and further refined and addressed. And so, certainly, that's something that's been brought up by city staff as part of the goals and objectives process. But as part of evaluating this project, we have to, under state law, evaluate it based on the rules and regulations that are in effect at that time. And then kind of last component, I know a lot of property owners reference as part of consistency with the general plan is animal raising. I do note as well, one-acre subdivisions, such as tract 1 sits 06, or 1 sits 06, and parcel map 1 sits 073, which are one-acre lots on Country Lane or on Holly Avenue and Country Lane. Those themselves are one-acre lots. None of those properties have animal raising on it. So it isn't necessarily that you're guaranteed to have that element of the rural living just because of the lot sizes. Certainly a decision that an individual property owner also has to implement. And so, that isn't necessarily the barometer for evaluation of the project for that purpose.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Glubka, you're up next to speak. Mr. Miskin, if you have documentation, can please hand it
I have documents that I'd like to add.
To Mrs. Sosita, please. She will handle that.
And I don't want my cat to be arrested, but he did bring home two kangaroo rats.
Ms. Glubka.
Somebody left something up here, too. Good evening, guys. Tonight, I'm not going to repeat what others have pointed out about the reasons the decision on Serrano Estates should not be passed. However, I want to appeal to you, as moral men, that you have made promises to those you serve in the community that I feel we all love and want to keep. Good moral character can be defined as honesty and truthfulness, trustworthiness of a professional commitment to the people we care about, integrity and responsibility to be true to oneself without reward. We ask ourselves, what do we believe in? What values are important to me, and do others admire this and learn from my choices? To whom do I answer in the end? For me, it's God. I hope it's yours as well. But I myself am not right or do the right things at all times. But when I am wrong, I ask for forgiveness and try to humble myself through a recommitment to remember who it is I want to be. We all realize that making the wrong decisions in life can affect others in a negative and irreversible way. And so, that is where we need to take pause and ask ourselves, how will this, how will this affect our fellow man? How will it affect me at the end of the day? Have you been inclined to hesitate when making a decision to act quickly, or been swayed or influenced by your other peers? I think all of us can answer yes, but is this, I'm sorry, but is that really the way you want to live and make these important decisions in your life? Is that the path you want to take? Or do you want to stand out, be admired, keep your standards of integrity intact? Don't we all want to manage our lives in the very best way that defines who it is we want to be and be remembered as? I feel that each of you are experienced in life and in the values that define who you are. In saying that, then, I know that you must understand what it is that needs to be done to keep your core values strong. Now's the time for each of you to evaluate and reconsider the information you've received and information you've gathered on your own. It may take being bolder and firmer in your decision tonight, but isn't staying true to yourself and the people you serve worth the knowledge of knowing that it was your decision and that your moral compass guided you to do the right thing in the end? I'm going to skip over a couple of things that were repetitive tonight, so bear with me a moment. Now, you need to make judgment about the proposal, and I would ask you all to dig deep, remember who you are, what you stand for, why you're sitting here in this position, serving the people that want to help grow your legacy, and more importantly, so that when you walk out of here this evening, you can stand tall, hold your head high, and know that you can be proud of the men you are and the difference you made in your community's lives. You followed your moral compass, and this could be your everlasting legacy and set higher standards for the future of Ucaipa.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sir, with respect, out of absolute biological necessity, we will take a brief recess. We will reconvene here shortly.
We will reconvene here shortly. All right. Let's return to order, get back to business. We'll pick off where we, pick up where we left off. Back to public comment. The next speaker, and I'll give, actually, I see the next speaker, so Christine, don't go too far. The next speaker is Christine Muller, followed by Mr. Scott Riley. And Christine, the podium is yours. No, Christine Muller, followed by Mr. Scott Riley. And Denise, yours is in here, so I did see yours.
Hi, Christine Muller, 34440 Fawn Ridge Place here in Ucaipa. Thank you so much for hearing me out. I have to say, for the most part, I agree with everything the people that are opposed regarding this development. But I want to specifically talk to you about being a real estate broker. I've been a real estate broker since 1999. I've been in real estate probably 10 years before that. Most of my career is new home development. So I really think that there's a right way and a wrong way to do things. And I'm just going to come straight out and say that I'm going to contest the negative mitigation. I'm going to propose that you don't adopt the mitigation mitigated negative declaration. I don't agree with it at all. I don't think that, there's been several things that have been addressed in that. The aesthetics, the hazards, material, hydrology, water, land use planning, public services, transportation, traffic, wildfire. I believe that there's many, many, many significant mandatory findings that have been omitted. I want to say that as a real estate broker, everybody signs what's called the natural hazard zone disclosure report. This is the report for all three of those parcels. We all know that one of them cannot be built. This right here is for all of you, and it's just a synopsis of what each buyer has to sign. And it's a breakdown of what the area has, if it's high fire, wildland area, liquefaction, earthquake fault zones, seismic activities. And in the negative declaration, and this is on an Aprius Creola zone, it's on a fault, right? And it's right there. That's why they can't build there. It says that they have negative, addressed it in the negative declaration. I'm going to call BS on that. You can't do that. Okay? Just like the high fire area, I don't care how many fire hydrants they have and how much of a buffer they have, there's not enough buffer on each street. So I'm going to submit this to the clerk, and I'd like you to look at it because there's other exhibits in here that people have to look at that shows the buffer zone that's required. So this is for you guys here. Please take a look at it. I'd like that entered into the record. I'd also like to say that senior projects are different. They're normally gated. There's four senior projects right in Beaumont. Three of them are gated, one of them is not. They have tons of amenities. Golf course, walking paths. They have all kinds of things, and they're geared for people that are low maintenance, small lots, big time recreation, gates, safetiness, right? And then they can go and travel six months a year, do whatever they do. This doesn't fit that at all.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Mr. Scott Riley, followed by Mr. Mike Ball.
Vladimir Scott Rileyinsky, 12253 Oakland Road, Oakland, Russia, 92399. I am sorry, city fathers and mothers, and if you can still say those words in government facility, but to make a mockery and light and parody and satire of this, but that is what you are doing to all of us. You're making light and mockery of all people here. It is clear that you are violating the intent, these are my sentiments, if you can put them in the record, of the general plan. I've been to so many of these meetings, and we get up and protest, and we're listened to, and then you do what you want to do. It's Board of Education, county supervisors. I sympathize with developers who pay big money to put your head on a platter to have everybody shoot at it. Ridiculous. But this is not the case. Definition of environmentalist, last guy to build his house and want to condemn. But this is not the case in this. Follow the rule that is set, one house per acre, and then everyone supports you. But you are doing an end run. It's saddening to see corruption in district of criminals in Sacramento and now in our little Ucaipa. Comrade Duncan, what happened to you? You used to be champion, a little guy. Now you're not speaking up for all of these people. You've got to remember what made this country. People that sound like me flee from that kind of corruption. And now system rigged. Show to us the system not rigged and do the one house per acre, and then everybody happy, no? Everybody nodding. So if you can remember the principles that made this country great, everyone's speaking, do not prescribe them. Point of order, city attorney, you cannot tell them what they can speak about. The First Amendment guarantees that they want to talk about cat videos up here. They can talk about cat videos. You cannot tell them what to speak against or about. And that is what is happening. We hope that in little Ucaipa, we can keep it like it used to be. 10 years ago, Mr. Neil Derry and Mr. Wealthy came to us, us growers in Oakland, said, what can we do? And we said, sure, we'll build, we'll put in apple orchard. What happened to apple orchards? What's with the wineries? Stuff shirt wineries? Now, Ucaipa not about wineries and stuff shirt big shots. They're about apple orchards. You don't like apples? We plant potatoes, make great Russian vodka. But what's wrong with the apple tree and the cider? I think that's good. And we said, yeah, you put the houses on the, keep the one acre, and we'll farm the middle with apple orchard. That's a good plan.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Mr. Mike Ball, followed by Mr. Dwayne Brinks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. And thank you to all of you for bringing up the good things that I don't have to know. I'm going to appeal to you on a little more personal. My name is Mike Ball. I live at 35160 Ivy Avenue. For reference, that is the house at the corner of Bryant and Ivy, the very first house. I've lived there about five years. During that five years, I can't count the number of accidents that have occurred on Bryant. I've entered into record pictures of seven of them. I brought, I was hoping we could get them up here so everyone could see, but we can't. So if you want to see them- see, but we can't, so if you want to see them, they're actually on the Friends of Ucaipa website, or the Friends of the North Bench org slash doc slash city council slash letter to Ucaipa M. Ball, please go check it out, you guys as well, several problems with the traffic on Bryant that would preclude any more houses, I think we're underserved up there in that area as it is, traffic speed is high, I invite any one of you, or all of you, come sit with me in my front yard some Saturday afternoon, or Sunday, preferably on a day when the snow mountain, when the, the snow opens in the mountains, traffic has been backed up from thirty-eight past my house, which is just at a mile from the location, that's since they opened the, all the way to the freeway, in addition, regularly we see, we hear ambulances go by on weekends, much as once an hour, often, on their way up to the mountains, or up the hill for someone that's ill, traffic density out there, I don't care what the damn study says, it's underserved, their traffic is too high, the road's too narrow, the last set of pictures that I submitted is of a young man on a motorcycle, I don't know what happened to him, but they hauled the motorcycle away, and they hauled him away in a stretcher, two of the accidents, three of the accidents were rollovers, they went over the side of the hill, I live very near the peak, right there, and both directions, not just one direction, both directions, people come up the hill, they don't let off the gas, they don't pay attention because visibility is very poor, three of them have gone over the side, about thirty feet down into the creek, two of them, I was a first responder to, one of them, I had to pull a lady out of a flaming car, appealing to humanity, don't put anything else up there without traffic control, okay, other than that, thank you all for what you brought up otherwise.
Thank you for your comments, sir, Mr. Dwayne Brinks, followed by, I believe it's Mr. Roman Etheridge, or Ramona, I'm sorry, Ramona Etheridge, is there a Dwayne Brinks in the gallery, no, okay, okay, opposed but doesn't want to speak, all right, Ramona?
Hi, the first time I got in contact with anybody about this was when you had the original plan, and I wrote a letter to everyone, the only one who responded was Justin Bieber, and I asked him, are you guys going to knock down the vines, because I read on the internet, in the UK, they knocked down all the art agriculture, and put in high density housing for the Muslims, he got quiet, he did not say anything, and then he says, well, it's because you Republicans weren't voting, and I'm, I told him, our envelopes wouldn't seal in the back, no glue, and so I brought it into the place, they stuck a sticker on the ballots, then I went to mark on my ballot, they gave me a Sharpie, which knocked it out, that was twenty twenty election, I feel like this is twenty twenty election, because you guys keep extending the time, keep making excuses, we already, you already had the vote the first time, but now you're, keep going, I feel like we're a bunch of dancing monkeys, and you guys are just laughing at us, that's what it feels like, and do you guys have a conscience, so anyways, when I look at that map, there's two waterways going straight into that property, do you see the, the mountain, the mountain's doing, it's bringing water into that property, that's a danger zone, have you seen that river, nobody's cleaning it out or anything, it's getting higher and higher, you are gonna make the biggest mess ever there in that spot, plus it's going against SEQA, which SEQA said it cannot be in a high fire zone, if that's a high fire zone, it was just right down our street, the other part was, you're going against SB three thirty, which says you have to go by the general plan, the general plan says one acre, so you cannot build there, no matter what, any developer says, or anybody says it, even if they said the word general plan twenty times, it, it doesn't mean, it's the general plan, what you're doing is wrong, and you're violating all of our rights, you know how we do the pledge of allegiance, this, the republic, this is a republic, not a democratic, republic means we go by laws, and the laws were there for a reason, you do not take the ordinance away, because that's what the scripture says, do not remove the ordinance, you need to go by that to support a town, and to have a town be true.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am, Mr. David Duran, followed by Dr. Terry Boone. Anybody see David approaching the podium, all right, Dr. Boone, I'll put David's off to the side for now, Dr. Boone, followed by Mrs. Kathy Sellers.
I would also like to turn this in, as part of the record, I, Terry Boone, at nine seven nine four, Ucaipa Ridge Road, object to the mitigated negative declaration for Serrano Estates and Vineyard Plan Development, residential project page eleven, aesthetics having less insignificant impact, and urban development is not aesthetically pleasing in a rural neighborhood, I am requesting a formal visual impact assessment, I would like this submitted to the record along with photos of the current aesthetic view from my home, I request that the City Council of Ucaipa deny the planned Serrano Estates project, it is unacceptable for the following reasons, one, it is at odds with the general plan vision for the city of Ucaipa as drafted by the citizens in two thousand sixteen, it is inconsistent with the rural aspect of the north bench, and disregards the Ucaipa orden, city ordinance eight four dot oh three two oh, number two, even though the combined parcels of the plant Serrano Estates amount to fifty-two acres, the land suitable for building amounts to about twelve acres, due to earthquake faults and blue zones, et cetera, so even if the RL one zoning is disregarded, or changed to half acres, the maximum density allowed would be twenty-four units, number three, the propose, the purpose of the Alquist Preolo Earthquake Fault Zoning Act is to regulate development near active faults, so as to mitigate the hazard of surface fault rupture, the stated intent of the act is to provide policies and criteria to assist cities, counties, and state agencies in the exercise of their responsibility to prohibit the location of developments and structures for human occupancy across the trace of active faults, number four, government code five one one seven five dash eight nine directs the Cal Fire to identify areas of very high fire hazard severity zones within local responsibility areas, the north bench, including the proposed development site, happens to be in that zone, according to the office, office of the state fire marshal, a reasonable building density in this zone protects life and property, several insurance agencies, including Allstate and State Farm, no longer offer homeowners' insurance in this area, number five, there are no exit roads east of the project, making the entire Serrano development confined to a virtual cul-de-sac, obviously, that can be a death trap in the case of fires and earthquakes, number six, none of the assembly bills cited during the state housing law training justify implementing a project that the majority of Ucaipa citizens disagree with, economic development is a complex step-by-step evolution rather than a hasty revolution, slow adaptive judicious planning will benefit us all, as well as the next generation of Ucaipa citizens, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boone, this is Kathy Sellers, followed by Mr. Brian Blanberg.
Kathy Sellers, one zero one eight five Palermo Court, no one begrudges the property owner who wants to profit from his investment, but he knew what could be built when he purchased the land, just like the thousands of north bench residents who invested in their property years ago, why should he be given more rights and privileges than others, just because he has hired Craig Heaps, reading from the premium land development website, Serrano Estates, this project is the first vineyard estate style housing in the Ucaipa area, and will open the door for similar projects in the future, Craig partnerships with those that want to experience the benefits of working within the entitlement game, it's not a game to us, the definition of entitlement is the belief that one is inherently deserving of privileges or special treatment, the planning department has obviously been given their marching orders to push the narrative about Sacramento demanding to bulldoze our rural community, or the more ludicrous threat, that if this development isn't approved, the mysterious Chinese developers will do more damage, none of this is true, if city leaders don't allow the eleven hundred acres on the north bench to be overdeveloped, it won't happen, the applicant developer is allowed unlimited time to razzle-dazzle with slideshows and presentations that stretch the truth, and make rebuttals to our statements, while we're allowed three minutes, Bobby Duncan has tried to limit even that, which is comical, since he is a strong believer in our First Amendment rights, which protects the right to petition the government for a redress, redress of grievances, Mr. Duncan, you were warned two years ago by Christine Muller and Denise Work, that the north bench residents would fight you on this, you learned six months ago how true that is, when you blow your dog whistle to the investors, that they might sue the city when their projects aren't approved, perhaps they should sue Bobby Duncan and Craig Heaps for making promises that this would be a slam dunk, Ucaipa is the jewel of the inland empire, Duncan Garner and Heaps are jewel thieves, holding the door to the vault open for the highest bidder, honor your campaign promises, you cannot levy a special tax without a public vote, to the extent that special tax is a part of your mitigation of any environmental impacts, it is not legally enforceable at this time, because there has been no public vote, and thus any such mitigation is ineffective under SEQA, as a member of Ucaipa Preservation Society, I ask you to deny this project for the reasons that I have explained in my written comments, which I am providing to you now for your review, I have a copy here for each of you, if you would indulge me for one minute, some of you know that my husband Bill proudly served our country as a young soldier in the Vietnam War, he is now fighting a new battle as an old soldier against stage four cancer as a direct result of being exposed to Agent Orange while in Vietnam, our family is overwhelmed by the kind words and prayers, and support from this community, some from people we haven't met, and others from people we consider dear friends, he feels your embrace, and knows he is not alone on this journey, I personally want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, council.
Mr. Brian Blanberg, I apologize, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, Brian Blanberg, one zero one five one Fremont Street, and I oppose this, I hope you guys do too, for a number of reasons that have been stated, but probably one of the most important reasons is to represent the people that are here, who elected you, I understand that there needs to be, or can be some development, people are not against development, if there's, let's say this piece of property was seventy-five acres, would it be then okay to build seventy homes on twenty-five or thirty acres, the centerpiece there, as it says here, twelve thousand feet, that's a quarter acre, that's not even close to the general plan, okay, and that's a majority of the houses, this is high density housing in a rural living area, I ride horses through Ucaipa for the last five, ten years, it's rural, the people are just asking for a way to maintain a rural life, lived for four years just above Stater Brothers on Bryant, and those are half acre lots, there's not one horse in there, or, I mean, some of them people have a couple dogs, you can't have horses and farm animals on a half acre, and that is smaller than a half acre, the twenty thousand, that's still smaller, you, there isn't any room, it doesn't fit with the environment, so I'm, I know I'm probably coming to a gunfight with a pocket knife, but it's really simple, it, the plan doesn't fit the environment of the area, and represent the people, we're passionate about this, we really are passionate, so thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you for your comments, sir, Ms. Alice Ames, followed by Ms. Denise Work.
Good evening, I live across the street from that building that they post at ninety-eight twenty-eight Ucaipa Ridge Road, I've lived there for about twenty years, about twenty years ago, I drove up looking for a home, I had a, they had a garage with a viewing deck, I remember looking across and seeing that field and the environment, before I even went into the house, I decided that was the house for me, been there for twenty years, and I've, you know, I have been an LA County social worker for twenty-three years, gone to many communities, many homes, and I always came home to Ucaipa Ridge Road, and never thought about moving anywhere, going nowhere, because I had everything there, peace, quiet, awesome community, but the thought about moving now, if they put that project there, I came from Orange County, that appears to be Orange County, they were supposed to make that different, make it blend in, doesn't blend in, still reminds me of Orange County, and I didn't even think about that, I thought, well, grapevines, you know, that would be nice, I love trees, I love, you know, plants, but then somebody said, at winter time, all the leaves drop off, and I went, I didn't even think about that, so as a social worker, I had to make many decisions on families that impacted them, you know, and I had to make sure my decisions were good ones, because if not, that impacted the community and the people that I worked for, and you gentlemen have all been elected to make decisions that impact us, and the families that live in the north bench area, so I'm hoping that you can all make a decision that will not impact us in a negative way, thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Denise Work, followed by, I believe it's Jean Chadsey, Denise?
My name's Denise Work, good evening again, I live at three seven two zero two Lime Kiln Drive in Ucaipa, I had all of this, and I've decided I don't want to be repetitive, and I know that that's hard to do, but the first thing I want to say is to remind each of you that you might, you might be inclined to feel sorry for the person that owns the property, and Mr. Heaps, because he's been putting all this time in, and they're trying to get this project through, and I support a property owner's right to develop their property, but you are not beholding to anyone, an applicant, to approve his project, you didn't, this, this council didn't vote on that initially, you weren't here last August, or December, or whenever, so I just want to appeal to you on that, that you not, I know that that might tug at you a little bit, but that is not your job, to make sure that someone doesn't lose money, your job, as I see it, is to represent your district, before we had districts, it was citywide elections, but now you represent people in a specific district, so Mr. Garner, the people in your district are here, the people in your district are signing petitions, and they're getting out, and they want you to represent them, and they're begging you to listen to them, so I just really appeal to you specifically on that, and I know that Mr. Mann is a, has done a lot of political, ran campaigns, been a political operative, so if you were to do a, a polling, and you took a representative amount, you don't, you don't poll the whole city, you just say, this small site, we're just gonna poll, and if you took just Mr. Garner's district, and you polled them, and you had a thousand people on that poll, and all but two of them, on that poll, and all but two of them were against this project as it stands, I would think that'd be pretty convincing that that's not what the people want, and that's what your job to do is to represent the people. You're not representing the developer specifically. We all want to make money. We all understand. But I just wanted to say also to thank Mr. Snodgrass for telling us about all the LLCs that are up there because there's obviously a lot of speculation going on that says this is going through and everybody else is going to get the same thing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Jean Chatsey, followed by Daniel Morgan. Mr. Daniel Morgan.
Hi, Jean Chatsey, 36105 Ivy Avenue. And so many people have done such a great job today, but I just want to add to some. I just want to thank the mayor and the council and the other representatives, the developers, and Ben here and the others. I want to address two things, the precedence and the environmental impact underneath that. But I know there's a push for the vineyards here, and having come from Napa Valley, I'd ask two things. I don't know, maybe it could get answered later, the water supply per vine and also the water supply per acre. The environmental impact on the school impact and the medical impact, how is it going to affect them? So I have more questions than answers, obviously. And traffic, I just even come in here today, coming off Ivy. It took me four minutes to get onto Bryant. Any given Sunday afternoon, go in on the 38, come to Bryant to the 38, it's a good 10 minutes. Now, I don't know if there was any research done to that. Brian mentioned it. However, when they say 51 homes, they said, you said it would increase by one-third percent possibly. I'm not sure if there was any statistical data or you're just saying that, but 50, your, any statistical data to back it up. So I want to address the 51 homes and say only one-fourth of those put the ADUs. The ADU is actually a state mandate from Newton. The city really doesn't have too much control on that. So say only 14 houses wanted to put an ADU. Now you've got 55 homes in that area. So again, all that impact. What can I say? You also talked about guidelines. Development talked about guidelines. That made me a little apprehensive. Is it going to change down the road? So I think everybody here is not opposed to progress, but one house per acre sounds like the way to go. And when they talk about rural living, I've tried to follow and abide by all the rules. When I want my place, they said two horses per acre. So it's interesting about the large animal. I'm a little confused on that unless I read that wrong, but I'm adhering to that. I was told two horses per acre. Let's see, what else can I add? I'm sorry, I just wrote stuff down. I guess I just want to address again the precedence. There was a property sold up on 36500 Ivy Avenue. That's the Rich Wine County. He's already developed the plan. I believe one of the members here sold it. It sold for $3.2 million, and it sold in 5 of 22. So some money has already been made. So there is a precedence, and he's already got five micro wineries and 41 houses on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel Morgan, followed by Ms. Melanie Martindale.
Before my time starts, I would like to request that my son Joshua be able to address the council. I have his sticker here. Is he able to address?
Hand the speaker slip to the city clerk, please. How old's your son? Does he need to speak with you?
No, he, I have him right here. He's going to say a little something. And it's not the three minutes, it's short.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joshua Morgan, and I am representing my four brothers and myself. I wanted to share a young person's perspective. My family and I have been talking about living in a country area for years. We lived in a track home area and moved from that. I and my brothers are excited to be in the north bench area. We really like how it is. There's lots of space to play, space to help my parents seek out the land, and many things to learn from this kind of land, and other good people who also like these things. We ask that you protect this land, keep it how it is, keep big properties big and not small ones, like where I came from. Please protect it. Thank you.
My name is Jaden Morgan.
My name is Wusana Morgan.
My name is Joshua Morgan.
We approve this message.
Mr. Morgan, the forgers.
You know, I had prepared comments, but I think a time like this really deserves a person to speak from the heart. Growing up, there was five of us. We lived in a two-bedroom, small, little apartment. My mom struggled, a single mother trying to raise us. When I was young, she implanted an idea in my mind, and that idea was country living, rural living. She painted this picture of what it could be like. After many years, fast forward, a lot of difficulty, a lot of hard work, a lot of perseverance allowed for the opportunity for my wife, my five boys, and myself just nine months ago to be able to move to the north bench of Ucaipa. There was a lot of saving, a lot of hard work, a lot that we chose to say no to, to be able to move there. After doing a lot of due diligence, checking in with the city to see what that area is zoned for, I made a very, very big decision, the biggest decision of my life, to move to the north bench because of the rural living. And with that, I have met so many amazing, wonderful people. It's not just the north bench, though. This is all throughout Ucaipa. There is something amazing, something special that Ucaipa has. Standing room only. I had to park all the way down at Aldi. Please listen to the citizens. That's what we're asking. Listen to them. What is the purpose of city council? For sure, the business side, absolutely, I get that. But a huge aspect of the city council is to represent the people. Matt Garner, I spoke with you. Your district, if not 90%, 99% of your district does not want this, wants us to stick with the general plan. Listen to the people. I met with Mr. Matlock after the planning commission meeting last time, and I also mentioned to, I mentioned to him that, that aspect. This is not just a majority, this is a supermajority, and it's not being considered. There is a problem with that. But there's something else that I think really needs to be considered. What is a rush? As a parent, I have to teach my boys a lot of important things about life. One of the important things is not to make rash decisions. This area can and probably will be developed, but why are we rushing into this plan? There can be better plans. If we hold them to become creative, to think outside the box, they can create a plan that will make the people happy. I ask you to please consider those things.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Melanie Martindale, followed by Mr. Dennis Miller.
My name is Melanie Martindale, 34956 Dewey Avenue, Ucaipa. So I'm here in support of Serrano. Agricultural housing is a beautiful way to preserve our small-town feel while still meeting the state's demands for growth. We all know it's coming. It's already in the works. It's already here at our doorstep. This is the way we can control the narrative. This is the way we control the way we grow. While I understand some of the citizens are opposing such a plan due to the current one-acre zoning, it is both unreasonable and a fallacy to assume that it will remain that way forever. As our city grows and changes, so will the city's general plan and zoning. While we do not, sorry, I lost my place. While we do not want warehouses or large-box stores in our city, we do want housing on manageable-sized lots, and we do want to maintain our rural and agricultural roots. We want people to come to love Ucaipa as we also love Ucaipa. This is what this plan will bring, people who will want to live in Ucaipa because of all of its unique ability to maintain its small hometown feel while still growing as a city. This plan will also bring improved water access and pressure to not only new homes, but also to the homes already present, beautiful vineyards, improved roads, amongst other things. Many citizens have spoken about their concerns regarding these items, but these, this plan would be able to positively impact these concerns and even possibly alleviate them. The consequences of not approving this plan is the opposite. The state will have the right to come in and, despite our best efforts, take over and build houses as they wish to do it. If they do this, we will no longer have a say in how our community looks or feels. The state is looking at numbers while we are looking at our community's needs and wants. While I do understand the emotional reaction to such a plan, and I understand the fears of those who live in that community, I do think that we must look beyond our emotional reactions and instead consider what we want Ucaipa to be in five, 10, or even 15 years down the line. A plan like this allows us to slow the state's building demands being placed on us, keep the rural feeling of Ucaipa with agriculture built right into the neighborhood, and allowing the city council, the city planning commission, and the city's citizens to maintain control over how and when we build based on our own community's needs. I conclude with this. The compromise this plan brings is needed if we want Ucaipa to continue to grow in the manner which we enjoy. Sometimes change can be uncomfortable and even distressing, but in the end, it's what's best for our city and citizens. Change can be good and beneficial to all. We look beyond our own wants and needs to see that. Please approve this plan.
Thank you. Mr. Dennis Miller, followed by Ms. Kim Shapiro.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Miller. I live at 35888 Oakland Road. My family moved here in 1962. All right? I sat on the first general plan committee of the city of Ucaipa. Okay? I was one of the people that voted on to keep that R1 zoning out there. Okay? There were months of discussions with the development of the city of Ucaipa. And with that, we looked at, you know, there could be changes, and there are changes that that our community is making. But with some of these changes that, as this developer has pointed out here, is trying to do a density transfer or clustering, okay? We, we had talked about that back then. But with that, we still had to make sure that the housing in that area was somewhat consistent with the surrounding housing. And having one-acre lots across the street and having 12,000 square-foot lots across the other side of the street isn't consistent with the area. The thought of density transfer or clustering was, is to increase the density but leave the rest of the space open space. This plan doesn't offer open space. It offers a vineyard. That's not open space. That's farming. Okay? This plan is no good on its surface, doesn't meet what the founding fathers of Ucaipa, when this community voted on to become, to govern themselves as a city. This doesn't reflect what they thought this community would be. I was there in those meetings. I spent hours debating with several other people in this community, and this is not a plan that they would have approved. I have sat up here as a planning commissioner and also a planning commissioner chairman in the past, and I have also approved some of Craig Heaps' projects that he was brought in front of us. But if I was sitting up here tonight, I would deny this project. This does not fit in this location. It needs to be redesigned and rethought with the input of the neighbors, and in turn, the neighbors need to understand that the owner of this property does have property rights, and he should have the right to develop it, but it needs to be done in a concerned way that fits the community. In this project also talks about senior housing, 45 homes. I've yet to see where there's a mixed community with senior housing and, and families, or if that senior housing of 41 homes would even be upheld in court. It sounds like segregation or whatever, a violation of a person's rights. Okay? Or we get down to the road and we turn, it turns out that there's no seniors to buy that, then they're going to come back and say, "We need to make it open to all families."
Thank you for your comments, sir. Ms. Kim Shapiro, I believe, that's the pronunciation, followed by Mr. Caesar Roldan.
Good evening. Kim Shapiro, 35686 Oleander Avenue. Good evening, council. I'm relatively new to Ucaipa. I've only been here just under five years. I moved here because it was a rural area. I moved to the north bench so that I could have space. I came from a city that was very crowded, and I didn't like that feeling. I don't like having neighbors that you can almost reach out the window and exchange a cup of sugar. If I want to see my neighbors, I want to walk to their house. I don't want people living on top of me. I want to have space. That's why I picked the area that I picked to move into. I don't think this plan is a good plan. I don't think that just because you can vary from the general plan, because you said it's a plan and we can make, we don't have to follow it exactly, we, it's a plan, we can make changes, just because you can doesn't mean you should, kind of the letter of the law and spirit of the law. You can tell by the number of people that are here tonight speaking, and for everybody that's here speaking, there's probably another 20 people who couldn't make it here tonight. Mrs. Wong said she had over 1,200 signatures on a petition. These are all people who do not want this project as it stands. We're okay for development, but not this development. We shouldn't have 1,200 square-foot lots in an area where it's all an acre plus. It just doesn't fit in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caesar Roldan, followed by Ms. Gwendolyn Waters.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmen, city staff. Thank you for the special meeting and taking extra time to cover this item individually. My name is Cecil Roldan, Pendleton Road. My continuous prayers for, for you to, to have health, protection, but most recently and immediately, I've been praying for wisdom. Wisdom is not just simply knowledge, and it seems like we have a lot of knowledge from everybody just gathering all this information, but wisdom is the proper application of that knowledge. And your decision tonight here will mark Ucaipa history. Every one of, every one of you understand what is at stake here tonight. You have the insight and knowledge of what would happen to our jewel if this project is not approved. It seems like we all want the same outcome. We just have different perspectives and different approaches to reaching, to reaching that outcome. Everyone wants to keep this place rural and undeveloped, and so do I, to be honest with you. I want to keep it the, the way it is. I, I also fought tooth and nail to stop property owners from developing this beautiful land. Ideally, I would love to see this property untouched, leave it as is. But realistically, all of this land, as Mr. Snodgrass mentioned, it's already privately owned, and it will be developed. The only way we can keep it as is, is to buy the land and protect it with a conservation in perpetuity. 20 years ago, people were opposing the same exact property from being developed, from not touching it. And I would like to take the offer from Terry Boom. We had been saying this, we've been involved in this deeply for four years now. Four years ago, we proposed the exact same thing. Let's gather up the money, buy the land, put it on conservation, and let's leave it as is. I would like to take those $100,000 from Terry Boom's offer today to be able to try to do that. The city council, along with Ray Casey and staff, endeavored to making Ucaipa a viable wine country. Plans like this gives us the only opportunity today to be able to launch a wine country, creating a positive legacy for our city. No one has a crystal ball, but you can, you can see far enough to know and understand in the future that what I'm saying is true. If we don't protect some of the land, we will lose it all. We will, I will continue to pray for your health and family, and more immediately, I pray that you make the wise decision tonight here to truly save Ucaipa and preserve as much land as possible before we lose it all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gwendolyn Waters, followed by Mrs. Sherilyn Long.
Hi, Gwendolyn Waters, 9779 Diamond Street. My husband and I have owned there for 20 years. I also want to say I know you're all bored and tired, so thank you for continuing to pay attention to us and listen. I appreciate it. So we live in that neighborhood right to the left of the plan there, the neighborhood most directly impacted by this development. I agree with most of the objections to the development, but I only wanted to mention two tonight. First, the traffic will be a nightmare for our, our neighborhood. This almost doubles, this plan almost doubles, the number of houses that will be dumping traffic into traffic into, directly through our neighborhood with no other way in and out of this development. That's a lot of traffic. We have no sidewalks in our neighborhood. Our kids have always been able to ride their bikes on the street. We can walk our dogs. It's quiet, it's peaceful, it's safe. All of that will change if this many houses are to dump their traffic directly through our neighborhood. My second problem with this is, I want neighbors. I want new neighbors. I would have no problem with that property being built on if it was going to become part of our neighborhood. This developer has talked over and over again about how he created separation, how you'll barely be able to see those houses from the existing neighborhood. He's even built a wall between us and this neighborhood. These people will never be our neighbors. What he's done is created a completely separate entity that is going to be dumped, dropped onto that land, but will never feel like part of our neighborhood. There's another plan that he showed at the planning commission meeting that was 33 homes on one acre lots that flowed beautifully. It was exactly in keeping with our neighborhood, and those people would become our neighbors. These people will always be separated from us. They are physically separated from us by a block wall. It'll be a different kind of traffic on our streets too, because these people won't think of us as neighbors. They will simply think of Goldstone and Azurite as their personal freeway onraps to blow through our neighborhood to get down to Bryant and Highway 38. They won't care about us. Our streets are safe right now because we're all neighbors. All of us who live there, we drive slowly and safely because that's our neighborhood. It will never be their neighborhood. I would be happy to see that land built on, but I want neighbors. I want people that become my neighbors, not this completely foreign body that will never be united with us. I don't want people living behind a wall in my neighborhood. I want more homes like our homes, that flow with our homes, that become part of our neighborhood. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Sherilyn Long, followed by Mrs. Kathy Duper.
Sherilyn Long, 9997 Carroll Drive. I won't be repetitive. I'm going to skip a lot of that I had planned to talk about, but one thing I do want to talk about is the traffic. They tell us that Serrano is a planned development. Quote, "The planned development project in each phase thereof must have two points of vehicular ingress and egress from surrounding streets, one of which may be emergency only. Where the applicant can show that this is a physical impossibility, this requirement may be modified by the local fire authority or county fire warden," end of quote. CH overlay B. "Substantial opposition shall mean written opposition or complaints from 25% or more of the noticed property owners." There has been a lot of opposition to this project. The Institute of Transportation, the IT, did not study emergency evacuation of this project. Traffic has been an area of contention between the surrounding neighborhoods and the developer. Without adequate ingress and egress for normal use, emergencies are expected to overwhelm. There are no exits to emergency evacuation routes. Without access to a major street, they are planning to dump up to 400 vehicle trips a day onto two very rural streets. There are no stripes down these streets or sidewalks. These connecting streets aren't even 60 feet wide. Should there be an emergency, it would create havoc. There would be too many people trying to get out on two rural streets. The streets in Serrano are only 50 feet wide instead of the normal 60 to 66 feet wide. Evacuating the elderly without vehicles in an emergency would be very difficult. A fire emergency historically comes from the north in this area. Consulately, because of the way the streets are laid out, people will have to evacuate towards the fire before they are able to evacuate down these already congested connecting streets. These streets are filled with horse trailers, horses being ridden out, other livestock, and multiple vehicle households. And, then do we need to discuss the lookee-looos that historically jam our area? We are the closest neighborhood to the highway, and the people drive by here to watch the fires burning. Other emergencies that will plague this development are flash floods, floods like the ones we had this last year. We had one SUV washed downstream right on this property. It was a life and death struggle to get the resident out of her car. This property runs right over the mighty San Andreas Fault. How will they exit? If a fire should follow the earthquake, it would be hopeless. So residents that remain stuck behind disrupted streets will find their electricity disrupted, water disrupted, and now possible fires.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kathy, Ms. Kathy Duper.
Kathy Depper, 10171 Fremont Street. I'd like to voice my opposition for the North Bench Serrano Estates Project. The proposal has been changed slightly, and now 41 of the lots are for senior housing, 55 and older. I'm a senior myself, in case you can't tell, and I just wanted to say that I just can't understand why anyone in good conscience would approve of senior housing in that area. Like Sherilyn said, I mean, the fire, the floods that we've had, I just think all these unsuspecting seniors could move in and be completely unaware of the serious fire and flood danger. I mean, we've lived for over 30 years in the North Bench, and we've had countless mandatory fire evacuations, flood evacuations, and many more warnings. And these aren't just from the El Dorado Ranch Fire, but other fires as well. And how are seniors, even active ones, going to be able to evacuate in time? I mean, like Sherilyn said, there's not enough access out, and the only home, I think, that burned in the El Dorado Ranch Fire was just east of that area, and the flames, I mean, just came right down that canyon. And I know we have a good fire department, but I'm just thinking, how are we going to keep you, going to keep the people safe? And, you know, I just think that the project managers are more concerned about financial profits than the lives of seniors. Let's see, and I know it's already been discussed, all this stuff has already been discussed, but I had to speak last, so I have to repeat what other people have said just a little bit. And it's been discussed that the owner knew what the zoning was when he bought the property, and we don't want creative development approaches, like they said. We just want one house to one acre, and we don't want our town, or I don't want our town, turning into Temecula with crowded wineries, horrible traffic, and no room for horses and other livestock. And I just ask, think of all the citizens who are opposed, and please vote no. So, thank you for listening, and for all you do for our city.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. That concludes public comment. So, because there was a lot of documents submitted to the record, we're going to take a brief recess to allow for the council as well as the applicant to review the documents submitted as record. We're going to do a 10-minute recess. We'll do 15. We'll be back at the top of the hour to close the public hearing, or to allow for the applicant rebuttal and then close the public hearing. So, 16 minutes.
All right, folks. Let's come back to order. Let's get this meeting going. All right. Now, we're going to move on to the next part of the special city council meeting, which is applicant rebuttal. This is a time for the applicant to provide a rebuttal to the information that was presented to the council. As a reminder, the applicant is not to introduce new testimony, but to reboot the comments that were made by the public speakers. Mr. Heaps, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Good evening again. There's a few things I want to mention, I want to bring up, actually quite a bit, but we'll take it one item at a time. I do want to note as we talk about wildfires or fire issues, that most of the existing houses up there have been built quite some time ago. Probably don't have sprinklers, probably don't have fire retardant material in many respects. The wildfires, there will be fuel modification standards. Each of the houses will be sprinkled. There will be fire resistant material that they need to use, new hydrants, larger water lines, et cetera. They will have to make sure that the neighbors have the proper fire flow to be able to deal with it. And of course, you've got a watered vineyard that will be surrounding on two separate sides of it. I do want to bring up, the traffic studies have come up quite a bit. And, you know, we all have different stories or anecdotes about how much, how much we can... Sorry, I lost my train of thought there, so. We do all have anecdotes and different ideas on how much, how many people, how many trips they take and what they do as far as how many, how many trips. That's why we don't suppose on our own what, what the trips are, you know, we hire experts. There are industry standards that are used to do these traffic studies. Even more important than that, I think, is, is the fact to mention as we keep arguing traffic and things of that nature. The general plan calls for 52 houses and, and 52 houses, automobiles, and trips out of the neighborhood and into the neighborhood and so forth. It's all included in the general plan. The senior only lessens that number. This is not a high density project. It's 51 houses on 52 acres. No matter the size of the lots, it's not high density as, as, as opposed to something that has 10 acres and 100 units. This is 51 on 52. The... I do take umbrage, and I usually respect everything that, that I hear from this gentleman, but I do take umbrage with the word of, we, we join the majority of Ucaipans that are, that are Ucaipa that are opposing this project. I know there's 100, 120 people, sometimes it seems like 500 here as I'm standing up here, but, and I appreciate them coming out and I appreciate their, their opinions and their, their thoughts and their concerns. But there are 50,000, 58,000 people in the city of Ucaipa. And I know there's 1,600 signatures. I do know firsthand that not all of them are from the city of Ucaipa, but many of them are. Or that they're registered voters. The expected wildlife issues that we face tonight, all the sequoia stuff that came up and so forth, I wasn't surprised at because I had seen before that they were giving, given direction that that should be a way that they should deal with this project was through sequoia, through rats or black widows or, or, or other type of endangered species that they should bring up to help slow this project down. The... So the design site was put together and we worked with Ray Casey very extensively because we utilize the AVA standards that are being processed right now. As a council, and I know not all of you were here at the time, but as a council, it's been before council several times, received directions several times from some of you that were on the council at the time. And it's basically a $300,000 plus EIR that's being processed right now. Part of that is to have the setbacks, part of that is to have the half acre lots to the front, to the outside of the project, and to have the smaller lots, which are as low as in the AVA as 10,000 square feet, to be in the middle or towards the back. Again, in those instances on the AVA, when you take a look at it again, and I know there's several different chapters because I was on that committee, I knew what, what to utilize to be able to design it. You have as many homes on a property, you're able to as many homes as you have total acres on the project, no matter what size those lots are. And there is also a 50/50 split from housing to open space, which this is. The very definition of rural is of agriculture, of having agriculture. Now, I know there's, you know, it's funny, it's the first time I heard someone say, well, we don't want the buffer, we want the houses towards the street. So it's more like a neighborhood and, and I get that, I understand it. But the goal of this was to put together a project that makes sense in the future for what's going to happen, hopefully is going to happen in the city of Ucaipa with the north bench with the development. You have to be careful what you wish for because if you don't do something with the land up there and figure out ways to deal with it and keep open space, and you have people up there on one acre lots doing nothing but one acre lots in, in, in one acre zoning, you're not going to have open space. You know, one thing we do on this thing is we put together an equestrian trail so that you can actually legally ride on this property. So you can ride along the front and you can ride along the, up into the, up into the foothills. So we were very conscious about making sure that happened. In Sacramento, there is, you know, we keep talking about density and what, what could happen with density and so forth. And in Sacramento right now, there is a lot going on regarding density and it is pertinent to this project. It's part of the reason we're going in this direction. In research, in designing the projects, there are a number of ways we could propose the project, but a planned development was really the best option. It's for, not just for the developer, not for Mr. Fitzroy who owns the property and certainly has a right to develop it, but we believe for the city and for the neighbors as well. As you heard from staff last week, the state has passed a number of housing laws focused on constructing more housing. A large portion of those laws apply to cities and individual homeowners, but some of them are tools to developers. ADUs allows the creation of two accessory dwelling units by right. Cities cannot exchange exercises, destruction, discretion in approving an AG, ADU or a junior ADU. It effectively triples the density of a property. As an example, if we went with the 33 one acre lots up there, we could add an ADU and a junior ADU, bringing the total number of units to 99. And the city would have a difficult time denying the project. The Housing Accountability Act is called the anti-NIMBY law. For those of you that don't know what a NIMBY is, it means not in my backyard. This law was passed to give developers a certain level of assurance that the project they're invested in can be approved. If your proposed housing development is consistent with the general plan and has an affordability component, then the state limits the city council's ability to deny a project. If denied, the city faces the possible penalty of $50,000 a lot. The density bonus law very easily could pertain to this property. If a percent of the units are dedicated as affordable or senior, then the development may receive concessions, incentives, waivers to the development code, and receive a density bonus to increase the total number of units. Rather than modifying the development code through the planned development process, the applicant could instead request concessions and waivers to the development code. The key difference is by utilizing the concessions and waivers, the project retains consistency with the general plan. In proposing the planned development, it is recognized that the project modifies the development standards. So it is up to the city council to determine if the changes are consistent with the general plan and compatible with the surrounding community. By applying a concession, the standard we are modifying is automatically deemed consistent with the general plan. This is important because if the project is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan, then the project receives protection from Housing Accountability Act significantly limited the city council's ability to deny a project. Let me give you an example. If you took this current proposal, 51 units, and added a density bonus, well, currently we're doing a senior project. If we wanted to, we could go back to the board and automatically put an additional 20% houses in this project, even on that footprint of land, diminishing the, the, the size of the, of the lots. And it would go from, it would go from 51 units to 64. We then could put an affordability component with it, which is 10% affordability, which would be about seven units, and have another 20% added on to there and be up in 70. And with the affordability component, it'd be a very hard project to deny. There are, if you remove the senior ownership component and instead propose to rent the units to families of very low income, the project could receive a 50% density bonus, increase the number of units from 51 to 81, 80. The applicant could, could request concessions, waivers to modify the lot sizes and setbacks and be subject to the Housing Accountability Act. We're not looking for those concessions. We're not looking for density bonuses at this point. We're just looking to develop 51 homes on 52 acres. We're asking to do a planned development that gives us the open space that we want for the vineyards, the equestrian trail, the, as, as the amenities, the, the, the open space areas, and of course, to develop this as allowed by the general plan through the development code. And that's kind of where we're at. I'm open to any questions, if you have any questions about any of this.
Thank you, sir. Questions by the council for the applicant? Councilman Thorpe? Councilman Venable? Councilman Gardner?
Yeah, I got some questions. So if this thing doesn't go through, what's the, what's the owner's plan? What can he do?
If he can't get it, get it through under this, he's not going to go back to just one acre lots. It doesn't, it doesn't work. It doesn't make sense. He's going to have to go utilize state laws, whether it's Senate bills or assembly bills. As an example, he could propose a, a housing development, a senior one, rent it to low income houses as rentals, low income seniors. The automatically would qualify for an 80%
Mr. Heaps, one more please. Ladies and gentlemen, the gallery, control yourselves. Continue.
Could automatically qualify for an 80% density increase, which means he could go from 50 up to 90. And receive, I believe it's four concessions at that point, some of which could be parking, it could be setbacks. It could be lot sizes, it could be structure height, it could be, if, if, if the, in that zone, it's a 35 foot structure height, they could actually go to 50 feet or 40 feet or whatever, whatever it is that they were proposing. So they could ask for concessions and, except for the, the instance of public safety, it would be very hard to deny and may not even, other than the density bonus, even get to city council, would be passed at a lower level, maybe even administratively.
Steven, is that true?
So the city's current density bonus ordinance actually authorizes up to a 100% density bonus for senior projects like this one. So they could propose up to, I think, 104 units on the parcel if they decided to go the density bonus agreement route rather than the planned development. And as part of that, they can ask for exceptions and waivers to development standards. Like we talked about during the housing, the state housing law presentation, the development standard that seems to be at biggest issue here is lot size. And so they, they could ask for a waiver of lot size. And unless the city could demonstrate, I think it's clear and convincing evidence, I think it's the standard, that there is a danger to public health and safety by waiving that standard, the city council would have very little discretion to deny it.
So could they bypass city council?
I don't, I don't think it's bypassing city council. I don't think that would be how I would phrase it. Right now, you have a lot of discretion to look at the development standards that are being proposed for the project, make changes to approve the project. are being proposed for the project, make changes, uh, to approve the project. Um, if it comes forward as a density bonus application, your discretion, so your ability to change things is significantly limited.
And, and the, uh, the projects, the, the changes to the project, it no longer would be a planned development, but instead a tentative tract map, which is approved at the city council level. The final map gets finalized, there's different things that get done in the city council, but the, 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 the action to approve the project is done at the planning commission level at that point.
So they, they could get, they could, they could get a project, if they wanted to, and bypass the city council? Is there a project out there that they can do that with?
I believe if we, uh, involve affordability as well, that's a, um, that's a possibility, yes.
Is that true?
So that, that's the purpose of the, the many state housing laws that we talked about last week, um, is the state wants affordable housing, the state wants to have senior housing. Um, so they limit the ability of the local jurisdiction to, uh, prevent those projects from going forward. Um, and they also limit the ability of the city to enforce its development standards, lot size, setbacks, building heights, things like that. Um, if the developer can show, uh, that they need those things to be waived in order to make the project feasible, then the standard for that is actually very low. There's a recent case that actually came out, um, that said that even if the developer could have designed the project to conform to the development standards of the city, they're not required to do so. So if you go down that road, uh, the city's discretion is limited. And again, I wouldn't say bypass the city council, um, but I would say that the city council's ability to deny the project would be severely limited.
Any further questions?
No.
Mayor Proton Duncan?
Has the fire marshal approved this project in, in the process of, uh, of getting the approvals to bring it to planning and then bring it to council? Did the fire marshal look at this plan?
We do have conditions of approval, but I, that may be able to better answer that if he has any other information.
As part of the standard project, um, planning, um, entitlement review process, we do provide, um, project to the city's fire marshal, and so there are conditions of approval that have been listed under this project as required by the fire marshal and the California Fire Code.
Any further questions?
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Heaps.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, I will close the public hearing. It is 9:18 PM, and we'll move on to council discussion. Councilman Thorpe? Oh, real quick, folks, this is a passionate topic. I, I, I hear y'all, okay? With reverence, we've listened to you. Now it's our turn to talk, okay? Um, you're going to hear things you might not like, you're going to hear things you might like. Let us, let us discuss this, let us deliberate on this decision so that we can make a decision. Um, I ask that you maintain this ability that you've shown throughout this meeting. Go ahead, sir.
You brought up earlier a point about evacuations if there's a fire. And having worked in law enforcement for a little bit now, been on some fires even in this city during some evacuations, in that area, those two areas that are coming into that already existing community, a lot of those people have livestock, whether it's horses, cows, and we'll go down, donkeys and goats or whatever. If they're evacuated because of a fire, it's not just cars leaving. It's going to be multiple and multiples of trailers, getting animals, not just people out. Um, I think that is a concern. I don't know if there's a way to address some sort of another alternate emergency route out of there. Um, not a planner, maybe that's already been discussed. On another note, um, with all the laws and acts that we just talked about, we heard earlier that there's 1,200 to 1,600 signatures. Mr. Graham, is there any kind of recourse that the public has in the event that this would get approved and the, not the developer, but, uh, Craig Heaps and his company and the, and then the, and the owner decide to go down some of those paths to density bonuses or whatever? Is there any kind of recourse that the public has at all?
So, I mean, development projects get challenged all the time, uh, after they get approved. Uh, there, there's a lot of pathways, uh, for public who are dissatisfied with the city council's decision, if it were approved, to challenge the project. You know, you've heard people talking about CEQA, you've heard people gathering signatures for petitions. Um, I, I would say yes, uh, there, there, there is recourse for that. In terms of legal recourse, uh, the one thing I would mention is that the developer is obligated to defend and indemnify the city. Um, so in terms of legal fees to the city, that would, uh, not be something that the city council or the city's general fund would be, be on the hook for. Um, but the short answer is yes. I mean, there, there is recourse to, to, uh, the city council's approval, if that's what it came to.
Thank you. I think that's it for me now.
Councilman Venable?
You know, I look at, uh, you know, my sister-in-law lives up in, in Cherry Valley, and they had a couple fires in, in the fire department, and the sheriff's department came quite a, um, a time before it even got to them. So it gave them a substantial amount of time to get out of there. And so they ended up bringing all their animals over to my house while they, um, had that. So I don't look at it that way, because I know that our fire department and our sheriff's department are really active in our communities and stuff, and I think they'd give them plenty of time to evacuate, to where they're not, you know, congesting everybody and stuff and, and causing harm to anybody else. So, um, uh, you know, as far as traffic goes and stuff, I live on 13th Street, and you should see in my, you sit out in my front yard, and that's right straight down from the high school, and they do 70 down my street. So, and that's a lot of high school kids, a lot of kids walking up and down my street and stuff, and so it's hard, you know, because I mean, we are, uh, I think a little bit, uh, lowers, I mean, we don't have enough staff from the sheriff's department that we're trying to get. Um, we've talked about having, uh, more, um, uh, what do you call that? Traffic cops and stuff, you know, in here to try to take, take the burden. So, um, and you know, another thing, it's 2019, I, this is, I started here when, in January, right?
In December.
And, and I'm getting the brunt of this right now, you guys hadn't until since 2019, to get with the developer and stuff, to kind of make this make sense along the way. Um, I think his door is probably wide open, I've seen him on other projects and stuff, that he's changed things and kind of moved things around and stuff to try to accommodate everybody. And I'm not his team, I'm not, uh, anybody's team, I'm my own person. So, but since 2019, there's a lot of things that you can do. I mean, I got projects going right behind me, they came to me first to see if I'd like it, and I didn't. So I told them to go to, back to the drawing board and try this and that, and, and still hadn't came to the city yet, but there's 10 acres right behind me that's going to be developed on 14th Street, 14th and Oakland Road right across the street. And I'm getting it on the ground floor, and I'm going to fight them like crazy, just like what you guys, and stuff. But I'll, I'll help them get towards something to where I like and what you guys like. As in a community, we need to be together, joined as a community, and not be fighting against each other all the time and stuff. So I think that if, if you would have got with him and since 2019 and maybe changed some of the things to make it a little bit more homey for everybody and stuff. Um, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm afraid, I work, I'm a grading guy, I'm a superintendent for a grading company and stuff, and I see big developers and stuff, and how they bully the cities around and stuff, I mean, and it's, uh, going straight through the states, and it's tough, and it really is tough, because I see the little cities and stuff that they go and, and take advantage of and stuff. And so I get nervous about that, of them coming up here, and so honestly, this project, it does make sense to me and stuff, because I can see where the big, big developers and stuff like that are coming.
Councilman Gardner, do you have any discussion to have?
Well, the, uh, the biggest issue I have with this thing is, is, uh, what could happen if this thing doesn't get passed? Um, that, that's what scares me. Um, I mean, I, I don't want to develop it up in, up in the north bench either. I mean, I live up there, and I, I don't want to see it, but we, we got to do something. Um, is this the project? I, I don't know. I mean, um, but what scares me is if the, what happens if this thing doesn't get passed? What, what are these guys going to do?
Mayor Proton Duncan?
So I'm the only one here that was here when we were doing at-large elections. I won in 12 at-large. Um, and then on, in 2015, the council, we had to go to districts, and at the time, there was Dick Riddell, Denise Allen, Greg Bog, myself, and David Avola. And, uh, because there was an attorney suing cities, uh, if they, if, if they weren't in districts, we decided to get ahead of that and set up districts. And at the time, it was unanimous among us that we would not ever just look out for our district, but rather we would look out for the city as a whole, like we did under the at-large elections. Um, the fact of the matter is that, um, there's about 120 people here, 130 people here, and someone says something about 1,200 signatures. There's 10,500 people on the north bench. Every district has approximately 10,500 people. The north bench has approximately 5,000 or 5,500 registered voters. This does not represent the entire north bench. The bottom line is, we're here to represent the city of Ucaipa. The city of Ucaipa, most everyone in Ucaipa has no idea what's going on here right now, except for what's being printed in that rag of a newspaper that, uh, that has just all kinds, yeah, I said it, I'll say it again, uh, it's a ridiculous, they have to give it
Stop. Miss Sellers, stop.
So, so bottom line is, we're here to make a decision for the good of Ucaipa, John. You, 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 you asked them, and it was you that had the idea, I think, about better, longer setbacks, right?
That was one of my comments, the other was about the seniors' lots.
Yeah, so, so setbacks wider, and, and the, 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 the folks have done that. No, no, I, I mean, they've done everything we ask them to do at the council meeting that, that you and I were here, and the other three, well, you were here too, weren't you? No, you were absent that day. But, but they've done everything that we ask them to do. And so, um, if we deny this project, they're going to go back and redesign it and bring it back again, and we're either going to have to kick it down the road or we're going to have to approve it. Or we're going to have to do something with it. I mean, the bottom line is, I don't think they're going away. Um, but, you know, there's a lot of needs that this city has that this project will help satisfy. We have fire, we have police, we have pavement, we have a lot of things to pay for in the city, we need money to do it, and I know it's all about money, right? But the bottom line is, we're here to be fiscally sound, and we're here to make good decisions for everyone and not just the north bench.
So, somebody quoted me, inappropriately so, that in the last meeting, I said, "I'm tired of taking punches from Sacramento, I'm ready to punch back," because I don't want somebody who can't even pronounce Ucaipa to tell us what we need to be doing with our city. So how much does that, how much money does that cost to fight? What's, what's a fair number that the citizens of Ucaipa can stomach with a, a legal defense or, or even, let's take it the offense and sue back? A million? I don't know. What's the number? I, I submit, the reason I say it, and I submit that instead of entertaining this, I think I, what I heard was, the, the amount of money to get the services up there, in part, is why this project won't pencil with 33 units. I refuse to believe that a rash action to approve this, instead of the 33 houses on one acre, on the buildable acres, instead of spending the money on a fight, because I don't think anybody in this city is a laydown and ready to just let His Royal Majesty Newsom tell us what to do. Why is the, why, why in the world were councils in the past approving these housing tracts, knowing full well that the utilities aren't there to support it, the infrastructure's not there to support it? So in my mind, I feel like the city has failed over the last 30 years to appropriately invest in this area to allow for the development that we all want. We want the one acre per, per, or the one house per buildable acre. If we're going to fight a fight and lose, let's spend the money on investing in an area so that we can, don't have to fight at all. Let's make it so that the developer, the property owner, can develop it the way that our general plan intended for it. I think it'd be a lot cheaper than losing a battle with the Sacramento, and it would also build to show that we're willing to put in the work to make it, to keep Ucaipa what we want it as, which is a north bench that is rural. Instead of taking on grand projects, which, don't get me wrong, we have amazing projects in the city of Ucaipa, but stop, let's stop spending money on great, big projects like a library. We need a library, we have one for now. But if we're going to spend $18 million, 9 million of the grant, the residents, so 9 million, 9 million dollars, how much would 9 million dollars go, Mr. City Engineer, Mr. Planner, to bringing utilities and resources there to, that we can keep it out of 33 house, one per acre, versus having to fight Sacramento for all the builders', uh, rights to put ADUs and low-income housing? I feel like we've under-invested in our north bench, and that investment is not to see it develop, but rather to see it develop the way that we want it to develop, we, we the people, right? Um, I can't, I can't ignore this. I can't, I've never seen this many speaker slips before, and admittedly, not everybody spoke, but goodness gracious, how do I ignore that? And I have two that said they, they support it. I don't, listen, I campaigned on it, I don't want the north bench developed at all. If I had my way, who, whatever brain-dead councilman voted to put houses up there should have been recalled 20, 30 years ago, instead of keeping it untouched land. But here we are, and we find ourselves with one acre, one house. So let's do what we can to, to make that happen. It's my position, we should be investing in that area to, in an investment to keep it where we want it, not to open it up to 50 houses on a spot that we, that nobody knows full well, you're not going to put 50 houses there because of, I seem, I read this California residential disclosure report, earthquake fault zone. I don't know about you, but every October I do the Great California Shakeout, planning for the big one, not a matter of if, but when. I think we've under-invested in the north bench, and as a result, we're finding, um, the property owners having to get creative with ways to make money in order to develop the projects, because they have to come up with putting something where there's nothing. Is there any other discussion from members of this council? Okay. Hearing no discussion. Is there a motion on the table?
I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Thorpe?
No.
Councilmember Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Mayor Beaver?
No.
Motion carried.
Okay, maintain order, the meeting has not been adjourned yet. We will now adjourn this meeting at 9:34 PM.